Yes, I'm here. Everybody show Jay.
Ready? Okay, so I am calling the Select Board meeting to order on October 3, 2022 at 6:33 PM. Welcome everyone, everyone's here, but Mr. Malanowski, and so we've got another busy night, but it's not going to be John Clark in one, I promise. Okay, any public comments to start out with, or anything that's not on the agenda? So, Ken, if you're coming over because of the, yes, you should wait until we get to that, so either keep your hand up.
Hi, this is Catherine McKee, Southboro Trails Committee, can you hear me? Okay, so I just wanted to let you know that I am in the audience, if anyone has any questions about consent agenda letter E, that I'm available for questions, that's it, thank you very much.
Right, okay, first, I acknowledge that it is to talk to Mr. Tully about joining Open Space. So can you bring him over, Vanessa?
Good evening.
Okay, so, welcome to the Select Board meeting, thank you for applying for the Open Space Committee, Mr. Malanowski is here tonight, as the audience here. We've also, there's a written secret letter from Mr. Malanowski supporting your appointment to the Open Space Committee. So, we tend to just ask a few questions and then vote to support you. So I'm going to start out with Andrew. Can you do that? So Mr. Tully, go ahead and give us a quick background as to why you were interested in this position.
Okay, yeah, thank you for the opportunity, everyone, so my name's Christopher Tullio, I go by CJ. Moved to Southboro in December of last year, just had a child, two months old baby, which I am not able to attend. But I really just have since moving here, me and my wife really want to get involved in the community, we thought this would be a great opportunity to do so. I reached out to many different committees and commissions to express my interest and talk with those those members about what the committees actually entail, and I'm an avid outdoorsman, I enjoy trail running, I've taken part in many of the open spaces that Southboro has to offer, and in talking through Freddie and the charge of this committee, I thought this was a great opportunity to, as mentioned, give back and, you know, help preserve and further the open space we have available in Southboro.
Thank you, so what is Smart Sheet?
Smart Sheet is a software company, it's my employer there, they're based out of Washington, but they also have an office in Boston.
All right, so.
Well, thank you for Mr. Tully for introducing yourself, I see on your volunteer application form, you also listed a bunch of other committees, like Advisory, Capital Planning, Personal Board, Trail, so could you just talk a little bit more about, it sounds like you have a broad set of skill sets, too. And could you talk about kind of how you chose the different committees that you thought you might want to be involved in? And then also interested to hear whether you've had an opportunity to look to view any of the recent Open Space Commission meetings or read any of their minutes?
Yeah, yeah, fair question. I have had an opportunity to speak to a member from, I think, all of those committees, with the exception of the Trail Committee, because they did not have an open slot. Really, I just put my name out there to, to see what was available and to learn more about them, you know, I read the charges that were available on the Southboro Town website, but wanted the opportunity to speak to them, I thought my consulting background could be of some benefit to each of them, but in speaking through the Capital Committee and the Advisory Committee, I realized it was a quite a much more extensive background and experience that I have available, maybe someday in the future, but I thought, given my background, sorry, just getting back with my background and passion for outdoors, I thought this was a great first step, and maybe something I can turn into a long-term passion project, or maybe I can, you know, take on another committee in the future. And I'm sorry, I forgot your second question?
I think you answered both of them, you answered the second question first. Well, thank you very much, and I'll pass it off to the, back to the chair. Thank you, and again, thank you for Tully for volunteering, great to get relatively new residents into the volunteer service pipeline here, so we appreciate your willingness to do this. I don't have any questions, I don't think your bio, Mr. Malanowski's endorsement is good enough for me, so I will suppose you're not interested, thank you.
Thank you, good evening, it's a pleasure to meet you, I actually was on Open Space for 12 years before I got on board, so I think you're a great fit for it, I think you'll bring a lot to the community, and thank you for stepping forward, welcome to town, congratulations on a new baby, and I think you'll be a good fit for this community, there's a lot of wonderful things, a lot of outdoor things, you know, as your, as your child grows as well, but you know, it'll introduce you more in the community as well, so again, thank you so much, I look forward to supporting you.
Thank you very much.
So, I don't have any questions either, but this was an interesting list of committees that you mentioned. The one that's probably closest to Open Space would be Trails, it's a newly formed permanent committee, it's very active, so you might want to think about that and go, I don't know if the preparation is there. So that one, there's no vacancy, but later. Okay, with that, can I have a motion to appoint Mr. Tully to the Open Space Preservation Commission?
So, second?
I would say.
Term expires 6/30.
Term expires 6/30, which?
24.
24, okay, we are all present, so we are going to. So Mr. Tully, you can appoint to the Open Space Preservation Commission.
Thank you very much.
It's supposed to be skirted that, she knows that, so I'm sure she will be contacted soon.
Be sure to stop by and get sworn in.
Absolutely, as soon as I'm, yeah, I can leave the childhood with my wife, I'll be in.
So our town clerk is here now, I mean, he's been here 24 hours a day, so.
Madam Chair, just before we move on, you know, I also noticed on the town website, I think, I don't know if it's been updated recently, but there were a bunch of recent appointments that we had made that I think were not reflected contemporaneously on the website, so I just want to make sure that, I don't know whether, okay?
Enjoy the rest of your evening.
Very much.
Okay, so our next item is, we have a appeal of a water bill from the resident of 6 Watkins Lanes. We have the letter in our packet, that is the deal, we've got the bill that is being billed. Okay, so according to Mr. Tullio, he was supposed to be here via remote, so he's not here, so we are going to table that for the moment, if he comes later, we can always. So Vanessa, can you watch and see if you see my view of Vanessa? Okay, so. So one of the three, is it maybe? Up here?
No, I want to sit right here.
You can sit here if you want.
Okay, that's good.
There's three of them, I'm interested, we care.
Well, it's a joint meeting, isn't it?
You brought the name tag, she's wearing her pairs.
So, Mr. Tully, you call. Oh, you called the planning board to order, oh, I forgot, yeah. Did you actually use it?
Yes!
That's it. All right, so welcome, planning board, so we are going to do several things with you guys in that morning, we're going to start off with the due, uh, proposed vegetative management plan that has been prepared by National Grid. So I was going to start off with comments from Select Board first, and maybe turn over to planning board's version comments. As we know, this is a time since we've had a, we've got 30 days from the Florida Department of Health to basically approve it, so that clock is running, so we don't have that meeting before that 30 minutes, so. I think Andrew Mills is here, can we bring him over? There you go.
Oh, okay. Hi, Andrew.
I'm there.
Hi, Andrew.
Perfect.
Can you hear us? We can't hear, muted.
Yeah, I can hear you.
Okay, all right, so welcome, so Mimi's called, the meeting's ordered, we're just getting started on the National Grid vegetative management plan. Okay, so I'm going to start with Lisa as far as her comments.
Okay, my comments are actually brief, I know that planning board had discussed this somewhat with National Grid at the meeting, so in looking at specifically the approval page, one of the things I noticed throughout is, instead of saying tree warden does it mean, it just says tree warden, so I think that's one of the changes that we need to make throughout the document, as well as the approval should be the Board of Selectmen as tree warden. Those were my major points, I don't know. Again, I'm interested to hear if there's any changes within this that weren't made at planning board had talked about with National Grid, so.
So before we move into this, the plan is to get the changes on the table tonight, and then ask, or Vanessa to make the changes, or to propose the changes, they're planned, so we've got to ask them to make the changes, right? And then, at that point, the signature that they want of this is Mr. Roy.
It's not the approval.
Right, so I guess we change that to just like the work, yep, it's tree warden.
Yeah, I think it'd be treated the same way as when the board votes on a contract or something, I could sign on your behalf, if the board has voted that.
Everybody, okay, so we won't see it in it, right? All right, with that, same.
I concur with Lisa, I noticed that as well, but, you know, I did read through it, I'm not an arborist or whatever, it seemed to me that they covered the bases, did reasonable things here, and I'm not sure of the dividing line between what the National, National Grid can do by right versus the need to our approval, and I think it's hard to argue against the need to do trimming and vegetation management, all around power lines, so I think they've got some reasonably strong requirements from a safety standpoint, so I didn't see anything there alarming, but.
So before we move into this, this covers April 1st, 22, March 3rd, 22, right, so it's already, you know, halfway through the year, so I am not familiar with the table of events until I sell this, is this something that they normally send to us each year without asking, or do we need to ask each year? And then this year, Mimi asks us to ask what we did, and we got it, so this is something we need to always remember to ask for?
I recall seeing it previously, hearing about it, it's on board meetings previously, so.
So probably should go to Congress or no more, so to start asking for, yeah, that looks like we do. Well, when the tree bylaw passes on Thursday, it requires that.
Next Thursday.
Yeah, next Thursday, that they submit the plan by December of each year, so for the year effective each April 1st, you want the previous December. Yes, and they, and they said that was in line with how they do things, because I don't know how you make the law, I'm not sure, so they said, okay? Yes.
Well, it's by law. And it's in state law as well, I think, too.
Transmission lines, which I guess is something different, which I learned. And our extensive discussion.
These are transcending power.
These are circuits, there's something, yeah. Okay, so the proposed bylaw, it's going to pass the week of Thursday, says that we should see this every December? Yes, therefore we should remember to ask where it is. Correct. Okay, all right, Andrew.
One question I had was, I, you know, I was reading this, and I was also reading the tree article one. What, if anything, does the vegetation management plan say about topping trees? Whether that's because the under the new tree bylaw, that would be not legal, and I understand from the trees that were topped before were done by the utility companies, so.
They just did that, that's what's been said.
So what I was thinking of is, is there an opportunity, and I don't know if there's just not enough time right now, to get the vegetation management plan, the utility will agree not to do that, because that leaves town with this unsightly half tree. What's your perspective?
That's one of my, no chopping, that that would be, yeah. But they explicitly say that they intend to top, obviously you do.
It's happened in the past.
It's happened in the past, and, yeah, it's unclear, they said they didn't announce that they did.
I don't really know, I just, my thought was that, is this an opportunity here, if there's a provision in this plan, that, just to be clear, that we, maybe you just made clear by, if the Article 1 passes, and then utility is warned about it, but we've learned that that's not a safe practice.
But let's say the cuts that we made at a branch, so, which is a little vague, but that tree is not a good topic, but it could be, I guess, so. Good point to reinforce.
Yeah, do you have specific language you're going to suggest? Just that no trees shall be topped? Simple as that?
Yeah.
No, I just wanted to know, actually, that, I think there's language in there that, it is not in a public way, but your person's property, that you're not doing the removal, so I think we might have to talk about removal and branches or anything that's true of Austin. You are hired, that's there, in a public way, I'm not in the road, but I can find some of these, oh, I think somewhere in that mission, they don't, they're not responsible for the removal. But I think it should be.
So, John, that move and they're ready to cut?
That's not, I thought that was addressed.
So another question that I had was, in the proposed bylaw, the part of it that has to do with this, says the annual plan will include a map of the surface where maintenance will occur, and I think we got that in the packet, except there, in the PDF, the plans look really weird, and the listing of the location of any tree expected to be removed, so the plans that I saw in the packet, it's for East Main Street and North Borough Road. So, I'm thinking like, what we take, what is it, that in the, under this plan, where will until we do work, it's, it's East Main Street and North Borough Road? Also some feeder roads off of those roads? Help them walk through this kind of list. It's hard to discern, please.
Yeah, I spent hours going blind trying to.
Yeah. Maybe that's a good point, maybe just include the tree list, the listing of streets. Yeah. Listing of streets, not, sorry, streets, I know. Not just the plans.
Yeah, I don't know if my questions cause more confusion than clarification, but.
So far, yeah, I'm so far, that's a good end.
Back to the earlier point, Debbie, the specifications call for the main trunk is to be left, so, as long as it's structured, so the cut limbs, talk about making the main trunk, which to me, includes stopping.
Okay, I, I have spoken to, you know, some members of the police who are doing detail work, and they told me it's your team that they, that they tend to be responsible for topping, that they did deny it when they came to the plan.
Maybe they, you know, are doing it on the ground, and that would be worth reinforcing, that's not, at least it might be consistent with the plan here, so. But it would be more clear to say no top, if they don't object to that.
Yes, and it looks like I was incorrect, there's language in there that they would be responsible for the removal.
Well, I was going to suggest that, you know, one of the things you could do is, if we, if this is approved without, you know, major changes or something specifically saying no topping, and you could send it back to someone, where you can say, well, we discussed this, and we interpret these provisions as preventing topping, and if you feel otherwise, it's not. So I'm keeping a list down here of the things you're talking about, so we could, sorry, if, if, if this is so approved by the board, I can provide a letter that it was approved with the following comments. Things, you know, things, and conditions.
Or understanding.
You know, has to be adjusted, so I can do that as well.
So it's not a condition, it's not a decree.
Right, so. So this has to be amended, either that.
Well, this is how we interpret, this is our standing on the.
I mean, even if it's not amended, Sam, if, if, at least they concur with what's being asked, and, you know, they understand what you're asking for, and they agree that these things will be followed. As long as we have something that, that holds them to it.
But we are asking for the listed streets to be attached, like. Andy, so Mimi, do you want to do it in the Select Board's first twenty boards?
Sure.
Mr. Mills, do you have any comments?
No, I have nothing else to add, thank you.
No additional comments.
Maria, I have just one, and it's a little bit of a clarification I put in, or pre and I put into the email to that panel. Um, this is a statement that the tree warden will be present on the first day of trimming, and I, since, you know, my, my thinking was that should be tree warden designate, should be present on the first day of trimming.
Yes.
But since then, I have seen some correspondence, like, just in a, like, random public records requests, of all the back and forth, and I shared it with the chair. And it appears that that's a time when sometimes there's a check-in, and some of the questions are, you know, do we have the rights to take down the streets today, is this permitted, is this type of information, I just want to be certain that is, is that, are those the types of questions that the the designated tree warden designated can answer, or are those tree warden questions?
I would say it's for the tree warden. I think, for me, I think the designated would, and could, should be able to answer those questions.
If that doesn't work, if the designated starts to make bad decisions, you think it, he's, he certainly has more arborist culture knowledge than I do, and I prefer his judgment, which is reasonable, and my sense is that he's done a good job with that, it's worked.
I think with the process in place as well, so I just repeat that on that, I think you put a lot of checks and balances in place through the bylaw, and what the process should be, that I'm relatively fine with that.
So I would say that he can answer questions for anything that's within approved, approved plan, that's brush and trees, under the lines, trees, entries, deviation, what's, anything other than that, he is not, my opinion, he does not actually have the authority to approve it.
And I'm aligned with that as well, he should be able to confirm, for example, if there's, you know, a decision to take down a tree, should be, you should have got a hearing or something like that. If they're doing that kind of work, but I'm, I'm of the same opinion, I don't think that the tree warden, the tree warden designate is simply operational, so if it's, if it's decided by another body, of course, I think that he should be able to carry out the work and confirm that, the National Grid, but if it's something to do with making decisions, I don't feel comfortable that the tree warden designated has that authority.
But we're generally approving the plan.
Right.
And if it's on the plan, and I think he's got the ability to interpret around this in the plan, but certainly, he shouldn't have the ability to say, oh, here's another tree that's on the plan.
Right.
And take these ten trees down or whatever, and I think, my sense is, he understands that, that it's our, our job to enforce that to the center, versus putting it in.
I, oh, when, when they notify us about the trees that are wanting to be your streets, will the tree warden designated know that each of those trees that National Grid want to be on? So, I mean, from what I was seeing, the correspondence, I think it's on Main Street or something, there's a lot of questions that are like, hey, what about this, and can you tell me, you know, what's the story about this, and I just think that puts the person right on the spot, right on the moment, and I'm, I think that this plan is great, because it's going to make this, we're trying to get ahead of the code, so that these, you know, these are on the spot, friendly bad decisions aren't made, but that, that's not to do with whether or not the tree warden designated has the authority for them. So if that's the person on the scene, I guess the question is, does that person have the authority to interpret something that National Grid is, you know, unsure about? And I don't think that that's the case.
Don't you think, though, between what's in the tree bylaw, that, you know, what's allowed through the activities, as well as within the plan, covers the base on this, I mean, I think, I think if you're talking about, a, a new tree comes forward, that, you know, I'm in two streets, they're driving down, it's about this one, you know, unless it's imminent, imminent danger, I can't imagine that person would even allow, and even if it was imminent danger, because it's done in the past, he goes by the plane door, and he goes by the force zone, I would anticipate that that continuing, and it would be a problem, I think, for all of us if it did.
Which we need to make clear to him, like, in the process.
Yeah. Okay, let me just end our conference. So, um, yeah, should we just move this again? So Mr. Maria is here and he would like to speak to us before we're done with this topic. So why don't we continue and come on up? But let's continue with the questions because we may go go into the table.
Thank you. And apologies, we actually believe it was a seven o'clock meeting. So apologies to both boards.
We just got started. Did you hear my question? I didn't even notice.
Not quite, not quite.
I think it has to do, and I think you might have told us when you visit visit as a planning board about kind of a close connection that you have with a tree warden. Maybe you know, it's a town and you're doing work. In fact, in this agreement, it talks about the tree warden, um, you know, being consulted on the first day and and throughout the project. So we have a little bit of a different setup here because we've got the tree warden are the select board members. And then we have Chris Leroy, who's the tree warden designate.
Designate.
And I guess I'm I'm wondering, um, you know, what types of like check in do you have with the tree warden? You know, when you when your crews crews go on site? Because it can be contractors, right? As we talked.
Certainly, yes.
They may not know everything. You're checking in with the person in the town, which is definitely the right thing to do. What kind of information are they getting?
Okay, so thank you for that setup. So for the record, my name is Bob Marianne. I'm a community manager with National Grid. Work closely with Mark and with folks at the DPW. Um, I don't trim trees, but we do have some folks here that are a little more familiar with that. And in fact, Dave Donahue, his president, he's our senior arborist, Forrester. And Marissa Pizzy is an attorney with our permitting and legal team. So to your specific question, I think I will defer to Dave.
So I'm gonna.
Yeah. Thank you.
Good evening. Yeah, my name is Dave Donahue. I'm the forestry supervisor at National Grid. I'll be hoping to oversee some of the work that we'll be doing here. Our line plans work in South Park. Well, in what seems to work in a lot of other towns is when we are in those towns, we're updating the tree warden every day with our of crew locations. So I think what we were, the plan was is to have a kickoff meeting with the tree warden, where tree warden designate, what wants to be there to introduce uh, the contractor. So, uh, for example, in Westboro, we just, uh, sat down with the uh, the supervisors of the tree company and that's tree warden. And Kyle Brendel in Westboro, uh, prior to starting and work. It seemed to be pretty positive. Uh, we went through the maps. Kyle mentioned there were a few areas in town that, uh, were uh, were sensitive to the town, such as some branch appears in the downtown area. And that which was part of our, uh, one of the roads that we're gonna work on. So I'm just offering this up as an example. But Kyle Kyle was able to let us know this particular area here. We're gonna be putting lights on the trees soon. And, um, you know, we had a certain wire, uh, that was going through over the trees. I was able to talk to Kyle about. So we were able to kind of, uh, work over a situation like that. But that was productive. So I would wanna do the same kind of thing with South Park. Is a kind of kickoff meeting right there prior to maybe the crew starting. So our, it's it's really up to our contractor, that supervisor that would, uh, notify anyone, uh, well, we're talking with the tree warden about where the crews are working that day. Some days we're not, uh, in town because of maybe weather or, um, maybe the contractor has some scheduled training or something that they're not in town. But Chris or whoever the tree warden is will certainly know where we are, um, when we're working. And, um, yeah.
So that's on the day to day interaction regarding a specific vegetation management plan. There is another element of it too, and that is any emergency work. Uh, and they help the boards to realize we have close to 100 calls a year in South Borough from residents who are asking for, you know, wires that, um, have tree branches have broken off onto ground or it's, you know, firing for these first responders to request an assistance as well. But the the general answer is the day to day operations. It's it's been an ad hoc relationship, uh, but it's been effective generally.
Yeah, I mean, I think I think so. I I just wanted to, um, ask you. So I was just mentioning, I don't know how much you heard, because I didn't know you had mentioned it, but, um, I haven't been reading, um, all the records requests. It wasn't mine. Um, but it happened to be some national grid correspondence. Um, and it was on Main Street, so someone must have done a records request. But it happened to be some back and forth. And there was, um, a person from National Grid, Michelle Vadoato, and says, um, to the tree warden, uh, well, it's it's both that, but anyway, we've identified one private tree for removal near P eight, house fourteen, and anticipate there may be more trees for removal, possibly two trees near P thirty four. Uh, we we will know better once the poles are set. We're going to do some trimming and wait on removals. Do we have permission from the town to trim as needed? And the answer at that time, our DPW chief, I think, is acting as the tree warden. And she says, yes, you have permission to do whatever trimming you need to do. So, uh, you know, that frankly surprised me because I didn't, you know, I wonder if this process is gonna prevent that process because I wouldn't think that the plan for removing a tree gets made right there on the spot. I think that's what we're trying to do is understand in advance which trees are going to be removed. And we're trying to put a process around that. So that that's that's, I don't mean to say that we're bad, this is actually 2019. Um, but the question really is, is it even our clarification on our our tree warden, which is the board? Um, and also, you know, uh, have tree warden designate. And we have the planning board that has consolidated hearings with, uh, as you know, we went through all this, right? Consolidating hearings on scenic roads. This was Main Street, so it's not. But, you know, what is our process? Who's making that decision? If somebody puts that person on the spot and says, we need to get that street, do we have permission? I frankly don't feel comfortable that the tree warden designate, who's in more of an operational role, should be making that kind of decision.
Well, it's an interesting challenge and it kind of highlights sometimes the the challenge is you can't determine exactly what the plaintiffs are until the polls are in.
Yes.
So when the polls get in, we we give send a supervisor role for what we call pre-check. And then it becomes clear at that point what trimming would be necessary. They may, they may in advance of the polls being set already be able to identify some trees for removal as well. But, um, what the concern on our side would be is if there's another process in between, you know, say, setting a poll and then having to do a consolidated hearing or something. Um, you, you know, you have a customer on the end, a resident or a business that's, you know, made a legitimate request for service or maybe it's even a road job. You have some objective that's essentially being, um, prolonged for the purposes of, uh, you know, the administrative process that they're creating. And I I don't know if, um, Marissa wanted any comment on that?
Maybe, maybe. No worries.
Thank you, Marissa Pizzy, um, council for National Grid. I just wanted to, I think to your question, um, it sounds like it it seems like there's two things happening. Uh, there's a vegetation manager plan, the annual plan that's under review. And I think it someone else may have said it. Whatever's approved under the plan, that will be the work we're doing. Um, I think.
Will they come trees eliminated or will under vegetative?
Well, to whatever, I think there are standards in the, you could probably.
Eight inches. DTH list.
Correct. And I and I think anything outside of the plan. So if there's a situation where a tree needs to be removed because the customer calls and we're doing something else, those are the situations, I think, that if it's not an emergency, we need to deal with sort of on a case by case basis. I think the hypothesis is true that if, you know, there's, um, I think there's a balance that needs to be struck between process, right? And actually being able to serve customers and and remove hazard trees when they need to be removed. But that would all be, I think, outside of the 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 approved plan.
That's really wonderful to me. Thank you. So when you say that vegetation management plan is really just a kind of a check, they were here. This is a false set. We're gonna be doing this trimming today. Or over these days.
Yeah. One of that we submitted is is a part of our five year cycle plan. So, uh, those years, those circuits, those three areas that we brought up, those are all circuits that are due for maintenance. And, uh, we have others in that are out there that will also be, uh, up for trimming. But, uh, yeah, what Bob and Marissa brought up are these other instances and situations that come up that have nothing to do with our annual plan. They, uh, we don't know, we have no control usually on on what's gonna come through in the course of the year as far as the word where we happen to set new poles or there's new customers that require, uh, a different kind of wire uh, on the street that might require visual tree trimming, trimming.
Also, that would be under, it could be under vegetative management.
It's.
It would.
That is.
They have an intention.
Yeah, so that is, uh, not scheduled. So, uh, the the word that I've, uh, before it is is our schedule program. That's something we know ahead of time. Uh, I'm kind of thinking about the the items that come up that we don't know about.
You might might think of it as an emergency customer work, new construction.
Yes.
Yes.
So the orientation part filled tonight. We, the agenda item is to basically, um, approve the proposed vegetation management plan.
Yes.
Um, so we can go on to a couple of articles to talk about that are also related. So let's just stick with this plan, um, as far as leaving comments that will make some national grid.
You have one more.
Well, I have. I have a. Are you finished? Well, I I remember where we landed or how we decided on that. I just to to make my point is, um, I I think it's as, you know, fine, the tree warden designate being on site, being the point person. But as things have happened with polls, I think I'm I'm not comfortable with that person. So I think it's what was the job to decide, you know, who was gonna have the meeting, et cetera, so you will. Um, so maybe can you continue to leave more comments on?
Yes.
Saying we're connected.
The modification to section four point four. Um, while I certainly understand the Emerald Ash for infestation, this seems rather far broad. And, um, in our discussions on the vegetative management plan, it was very clear that it was any brush or trees, ADBH or less. But this seems to broaden it so that it's any dead wood be will be evaluated or any moth damage, any trees with moth damage. Um, I'm not comfortable with that. I'm comfortable with the areas of extensive Emerald Ash for being added as a modification, but not those other two sections. I think those would require hearings. Are you talking about section four point four of the of the vegetative manager plan? That was. So the vegetation management approval of the cover page, there's a modification to section four point four that's in there. And it says, trees with extensive deadwood will be evaluated on case by case basis with the tree warden to determine the best case of course of action. Areas of extensively extensive Emerald Ash for infestation or spongy moth damage will be identified by the contractor to review the tree warden prior to commencement work. So those don't seem to be annual maintenance things. They seem to be above the annual, uh, vegetative management plan. And although I certainly understand the, uh, the need for trees with extensive Emerald Ash for infestation to be identified and removed. The others I do, I don't agree with.
I think the, uh, I think that this reference to the modification was left in this, uh, permit from specifically from a particular town that was infested with Emerald Ash for and, uh, what was called gypsy moth damage is now spongy moth damage. But if I I would think we might be able to remove that modification to section four point four and just leave section four point four.
Then I'd be good with that.
Yes, because, uh, deadwood and and what's in four point four is not, uh, specific to, uh, it's it's generally, it's it's all deadwood. It doesn't matter if it came from, um, you know, a certain insect or a certain disease. Deadwood is deadwood. So, um.
Dead or damaged.
Yes, yeah. And there and there's a lot of that.
I was better.
So normally, I am, we're fine. I am fine with section four point four because that has to, that has to stay in there, in my opinion, that.
So the modification's up. So we're gonna get rid of the modification and put. And, um, two things that Mr. Bennington had mentioned previous to, uh, your arrival that, um, we would like it to be explicit in there perhaps under four point one, that no tree shall be topped. Here's a add something. Yeah. And then, um, the circuit maps are very difficult to read. If we could just get a list of streets that this plan will, um, apply to. So that's all.
All right, the, uh, we'll just pull up those roads.
Yes, yeah.
Separating from the maps and list them.
Yeah. You want that list in within the within the vegetative?
Yes, yeah. So we'll know exactly what this plan was.
When when we said plan, are we are we still talking about the three circuits, uh, we submitted?
Yes, yes.
Done good. Um, so that's it, plan where I leave.
Uh, my point was the one that Amy just raised is my my read of the plan is now the topic is not permitted there. So we have an explicit, uh, I think would be very helpful.
Yeah, that that can be, that can be put in there. Is is language in in there, although following proper.
It talks about, uh, keeping the main stem intact and and pruning branches and so forth. Those I read to me, the topic that had to be explicit, I think would help people.
And the last one was, and this may already be implied, that we are, what are you considering a new bylaw next Thursday night? Um, that is going to require that the annual vegetation management can be split away based on the first year here, hard to be taken for start date. Right?
All good.
Okay, so, um, I don't know when we are on three day holiday. Mr. Purple is gonna take it. Sixty days. So Mr. Purple, our coordinator is gonna take it from here to basically give the signed document back to you with these changes. So we will work with National Grid to make sure that you're playing back.
Will the board be making the changes or or be requesting, you know, us to make those changes as a plan we submit?
With your plan, so I would think.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's what I, no, 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 I I would prefer to do. Just didn't wanna assume. Okay, thank you.
Back order of the fall. Sure. So do we need to vote to approve with Mark's permission, the part of our design?
So I can set forth a vote and then things will come vote, so. Um, so, um, I'll make a motion to approve the proposed vegetation management plan by National Grid with the amendments that we had listed tonight.
And designate.
Designate, Mr. Purple to sign, we have the second one. That's a change of meaning. Thanks. So the second one on the paper. So four zero two, we need amended. Do you have your motion, Mr. Mills? May I start your motion, sir?
Mr. Mills.
So move.
Second, to approve the vegetation management plan for FY twenty three. I have a motion and a second in the session. As an as amended. As an as an ended. Um, I just have one more little quickie amendment. There's a typo in the last bullet on the second change. So we do not currently have that passive tree removal banned. I think it was planned to be.
One other amendment that we talked about, the tree ward basically labeled throughout here.
Yeah. So we have a a motion in a second. All in favor, Mr. Mills?
If we roll.
Control, yes, we can ask. Here it is. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Sorry we were late. Just understanding.
I appreciate it, thank you. Okay, now to the warrant. So tonight. So plenty more, we're gonna talk about the two articles that you have proposed recently. We're having such a time. Uh, two guys basically have reached a proposal, um, mutual article because we went out of time. And we have time, we have to go to the next, so thank you very much. And we promised that we would have such a time we can produce. One, two, we're good. Okay, so. All right, so the board is not voting on item article. Advisory has, you guys probably know, but we have not. So we want to hear from you guys tonight in the last questions and then we'll decide whether we want to to take a position. I'm gonna stay at ten minutes as far as we want to go. So we both know we're able to change this for our show on screen. So. So. Ms. Luttrell, you want to start off with does an overview of one?
Oh, sure. So article one, the tree protection by law, brings the Massachusetts general law, chapter eighty seven, which is the shade tree law and the scenic roads law, Massachusetts law, chapter forty, section fifteen C, which are already state laws and require the protection of public shade trees. It brings those closer to home and outlines a clear process for the town to comply with those laws. And public shade trees are trees that are in the public right of way and they're public trees owned by us all. This does not apply to any trees under private ownership.
All right, so the plan tonight maybe is to take straw boat, which we heard from you. And the missing number, we're gonna wait. We've got a free time meeting scheduled at six o'clock. So we will wait till you have all party members. Which at least have an idea tonight of where the four years stand. So my first question is a very general question. I'm gonna start with you. If someone from Tommy says, you know, it's my understanding that chapter eighty seven already applies here. It covers a lot of things that are being proposed as by law. I happen to be one that likes to minimize regulation. I want to keep things efficient and, you know, I want what I need, but I don't want any more than I need, right? How would you respond to what the purpose of the bylaw is if a lot of what she comes into post by law is already in state law?
So by law puts some push on bones. It brings this process closer to home. So we know exactly how to comply with those laws. In the past, there's been confusion on what do we do this? I didn't know that this applies, didn't know, you know, there's been a lot of confusion. There's been no process and thus we have not been protecting that public shade trees. This lays out a clear process for the town to comply with those Massachusetts laws. Are you gonna do a presentation? Yes. Are you, you have some presentations? I haven't, are you going to in the presentation clarify what the bylaw adds? It's not a state law, are you going to do an comparison at all? Or are you gonna get that specific? Or are you just going to say, or you just kind of saying what you said, which is similar to what I just said, meeting votes? Um, okay, second question. There's been some concern from some, I've heard this story more than once, so I'll just repeat it. I think this Tommy, which is the drip line. So can you explain to everybody what a drip line is so that people in Tommy will understand it? So I'm doing way to practice and I start explaining in English what it is. And then explain why you think that the people are concerned that you tell them what they can plant and not plant under their own trees. Means, was that sort of the service? So the there is a section in the bylaw that requires a permit from the tree warden for excavation and construction under the drip line. And it's under the drip line of public shade trees. And that's usually the, you take the branches and go straight down to the ground. And the reason that's there is to protect the roots of public shade trees. And that's the first line of defense in protecting the health of the tree. You have your feeder roots, which feed the tree about if those are destroyed, the the tree will die because it's not legal. And then you have the, I just forgot the name, stability roots that hold the tree up. If you destroy those, it makes the tree unstable and unsafe. So we've got a tree, for example, that is public shade tree, right? It's very public shade tree, but the branches in the canopy is in my yard, right? And I want to plant a bunch of flowers underneath that canopy. So to do that, I've got to get a permit. It's excavation and construction. Okay, so just planning angles and should not require me to. It's a truly biggie that my purpose would be to be the department.
Yes.
Next, I want to just because I've heard along those points, I think there's confusion maybe. And some people think that with the drip line, say I have a tree in my yard, in my property, what the branches go over into the right of way? So I think there's some confusion with people. So you're saying, just so people are clear, that it's only the trees, public shade trees in the right of way that the drip line applies to, not to something in your yard that may go into the right of way? That does not matter. That's not a fact that by this.
Right, this by law only applies to public shade trees. It means that are trees that are owned by us all.
I mean, you might be asked to define what that really means because we've got a tree that's.
I have a slide on the.
And this is not, you know, you guys know the stuff backwards, of course, right? Um, you can, you know, talk about your sleep, but not everybody there is saying, you know, and you've got something that's complicated. This is, it's a lot of pages, right? People being concerned with something weird and they don't really understand. And therefore they tend to maybe just say, I'm not gonna vote for it because I don't understand it. So that's the kind of question I think you should be prepared to truly, you know, talk in a way that would be understood by the average person that doesn't feel treats all anyone. I'm there now. Thank you. Sam?
I've been involved in this quite a long time. Understanding.
I have I have a follow up question that's also about the drip lines on the. And I'm just kind of taking this through. Particularly D two. Permit from the tree warden designation also be required for any person for engaging in construction or demolition activities within a drip line of public shade trees. So so for public shade trees, to be a public shade tree is located in a public way. Right? So then for construction and demolition activities that are in a public way, you probably shouldn't be doing it anyway, because it's, well, what about the 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 drip line of the tree that goes on or onto your own property? You need a, you have a tree that's huge, it's right on a, it's on the, within the public way, but closer to your property, drip line extends, we'll say it extends twenty five feet into your property. So you see, you need a permit to do, it's just kind of a construction or demolition activities. So one, I mean, one suggestion, that just like in D five, where you need a permit for engaging in excavation activities that may disturb a public tree? And just a suggestion is you can also have a permit to condition that so that it's for engaging in construction or demolition activities within the drip line of a public shade tree that may disturb a public shade tree. So only the type of construction or demolition activities that may disturb the tree will be. It's just, because you can't define every type of, you know, construction or demolition activity that you're trying to really cover here, but you know, that may alleviate some people's concerns.
So is three, is that we never?
D two.
Two.
Yeah.
This person show, this by law.
I know, D four, D four is the one I think is getting the fouls questions. And then you you probably should have said of the numbers, some parts of the numbers, they should be letters. But do you have? What was your? Do you have a lot of cash at the one? It's a warrant.
That is. Five, D five.
This is the one I'm talking about. See that part? That may deserve a public shade tree?
Yeah.
Put that in there too.
Oh, engaging.
So that's just a, that's a suggestion that I have. I know that will actually require an amendment, but and then my other question is just on G four. The fee that's paid for removing a public shade tree that that isn't being, you know, dangerous, moving about to fall down, where, you know, we've had a couple of those where it's not dead. We say, okay, it poses some others. Where does the fee get deposited? And I don't know if we even need to figure that out now, but I think.
It goes to the general fund or whatever, to the town.
Okay.
Local revenue. Yeah.
Local revenue.
They thought of local revenue generates are pre cashed.
Okay.
Doesn't run.
But there's no, because before there was almost talking like a little ball. It's too complicated. So I think those are the only questions I have.
Can I run on your place on D five?
Yeah.
I need the example, as you know, the construction, there's construction activity that goes on the bottom round, like storing materials or whatever, that would not presumably serve a tree. So I think that qualifier would be helpful to cut out the current activity that makes sense.
Well, so you can call the tree warden designate and he can say.
Well, if you have a requirement.
Yeah. And and the idea is that you you're protecting the life of the public shade tree and that he would be able to, if you were doing something that may harm the tree, would be able to figure out how to mitigate that somehow.
Right.
That you can.
It's to me, it's pretty clear that those lines, if it may enter to harm the tree, then you gotta get a permit. Direct something, partying a vehicle, destruction related.
Protecting vehicles in construction.
Or construction process.
But it doesn't say in the construction.
You're just thinking about ways where someone could come back and select war or building specer. Because to, an activity is already under, you know, in progress. It really has nothing to do with potentially harming a shade tree. And so it's just waiting, you needed a permit for a lot of them. Because there's a whole system of fines under this escalator. So I think it makes sense to have it be kind of, you know, a lighter touch there. I'm not gonna. Yeah, if you want to build a gazebo underneath a tree and it's, we have the, underneath the drip line of public shade tree, it's on your property, it's not gonna go to the ground. Not sure, why should you build, other than just a building permit? Why should there be an additional permit from the tree warden designate?
Maybe you like injured, like a construction or demolition that would disturb, you know, a foot of earth or anything.
It's not really, it's not really.
Round, right. Right, so just add that 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 phrase to.
Yeah, yeah.
Two or is it D five?
It's.
D five. D five two.
Yeah, yeah.
So it's a, it's a fourth, so it's on. And so plenty more, I would, this is a suggestion. You know, the by your job is to make recommendations to Tommy as far as all articles, and that's your main job. And the Tommy, there's just a, right, so that's for the jobs. You gotta buy one, go on this one and and please, in fact, go get against it. And again, drip line is this issue. So I don't know what, you know, it's not impossible, someone's gonna stand and say, why should I go to explain the one? And so he goes, you know, we'll get on this one then. So you might want to talk with him, you know, one on one and just try to possibly mediate this. Because it is a drip line, just is a concern.
Right, yeah, I was happy.
All right, so that's a suggestion.
Well, he wanted a definition of construction.
You, we've actually sought them that we're with this many modifications, but they actually change it to you.
He's not in audience, this, we have so much trees listening to this, but the. All right, so with that, we're gonna take our straw boat that we talked about and then we'll take our push boat of thirteen that we create. All right, so straw boat, you.
I was supportive with the amendment that you just talked about. And I think where I kind of came around to this was, you know, the work that Mr. Brown threw in. I must have drilled it and just kind of demonstrated throughout the summer, this is kind of a process that we think. Will we follow? We definitely would like to start to keep, it does take up a lot of time, I have to select one all over that. So we do want to get in place a tree warden designate. Who is really the de facto tree warden. And so I think I I've kind of seen the process, like I can see how it's worked.
Yep, again, I think it's important to protect trees. Unfortunately, what we've been doing in the past hasn't been working perfectly. I think this is a good step forward and I support it.
Same, I, you know, again, kind of piggybacking on what Andrew said. I think the process that we went through for a large number of trees that we went through was in step with exactly what's happening here. So I am definitely.
I am also with you, and I would also, again, think about the audience that maybe Tommy, I don't know, some of you do, a little. But listen to them, you know, and if there if there seems to be general sentiment toward making change, I'd say, listen, and let's get the same cast, right? So we can, while I know that you've got a much better tree policy, new tree model than we did a few months ago. All right, so you got a full, a strong book on that. So, so did you get that? Okay, number two, scenic roads. So, okay, so Andy, you want to start with?
Um, yeah, I'm buying, I'm still opposed to this just because I think that most of them are a little conflicted on this. I know that, so this is, this list is narrower than the list one before. Yeah, I just think that.
Same with us, bro.
Well, I think there's an diligence on that you guys may not be aware of.
We'll do so, here's here's the concerns that you start with.
I think the purpose of the scenic road act is that there are some roads that are more scenic and special than others. And I have no idea about this vote in nineteen seventy eight, where by a very small vote, all roads in the entire town were designated scenic. From, I have yet to hear of another town, it's getting. From, I have yet to hear of another town, if Massachusetts is like it, so there's maybe one or two. And it, it's just threatening, if we drive around other towns, Hopkinton, Ashland, Holliston, Bramingham, where. On the street name sign, there's a little special sign designating the scenic roads, I think that. Is a better way to go, so I would really go the opposite direction, and so I.
So even if others, we would support an article that actually listed. Rather than someone can determine where scenic has stone walls and, uh, so you would have supported if it had a list of roads that.
Yeah, and I don't think that it's too, I mean, one of the arguments that made it will be too difficult to come up with a list of what is, I don't think it would be. And what, one of the things that kind of kicked this off was Mr. Snyder's about a year ago, put together. A draft flowchart policy, and he had a, um. List of what would be kind of the, what he believed that, I think, were the scenic roads, turned out to be vaguely not correct. But it was a, it was a completely, uh, non controversial. List of, you know, five road, deer foot road, Oregon road, et cetera, et cetera. So I don't know why some of these small subdivision roads from like two thousand sixteen are. Uh, you know, where the trees might have been planted like four or five years ago are, are worthy in this level of. Regulatory complication. So I, I, I have said, I've, this is a view that I've kind of only hardened over the last year, so.
So, you know, Dave, you know, Sam.
Yeah, I think that we started down the wrong path years ago there in terms of monitoring. And I guess I view this as a tree protection reinforcement as opposed to scenic road kind of thing. Yeah, I'm, I'm less concerned about, you know, what is scenic in terms of this is, as you guys voices, I think this actually. Has a lot of protection for trees, which I mean is important, so I support it for that reason, and I'm not eager to. But one vote is more scenic or less scenic than other roads, I think all roads are the same level of protection for trees, I think this is, so, supported.
I'm gonna crossroads between Andrew and Sam. Um, I, I still haven't fully made up my mind as to where I'm gonna go on this. I, I feel strongly in the belief that, um, scenic roads are special. And by maybe every road. You're taking away a little bit from a special designation, but at the same time, I understand the reasoning for doing this. To give that protection to the trees on, on these roads. So I'm gonna crossroads, um, at this point, if I, if you maybe take a vote today. I'm not sure where I would go, honestly, it would be a split second decision, uh, maybe. Marty could say something based on what we've heard tonight that, that might change my mind, I see it from both sides. And I, I've heard from a lot of people on this one, more so than the trees. And there's this concern from, from people on, on the scenic road piece, so, um.
I'm concerned.
Well, it's, 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 that's what Andrew said.
It's similar to what Andrew said, and then just, um, obviously, some people are just concerned that. We're making the process just, it's too much, that it's infringing on rights. I don't, whether I believe that or not, there are people that, that have said that to me, so, um.
It's not their trees.
I agree, I, I get it, Sam, I, I completely get it, I'm just sharing some of the concerns, I think that are gonna come up and tell me. I think one of the major things is just as Andrew said, that's one of the things I hear the most is a scenic road is supposed to be somebody's scenic and special. And people have listed specific roads off to me and said, well, I live on this road, and they're certainly not gonna see anything about that, so, I mean. I, I. I'm just on the fence on this one, more so than I was a no last time, so, but I'm on the fence this time. So that, that's a step in the right direction, I'm, I'm, I'm moving, I just, um. But.
But also, the, once a road is designated as scenic road, and also the. Constructing, removing, altering a stone wall with a public way is tricky. So now, and that really, like, the, the part of the act, the real purpose, I would think, is some of these older roads, where there's a. Why do we like the, 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 um, stone wall, cause they're scenic and they're part of the whole New England character, but on. You know, like Vale Terrace and, um. Some of these, some of these roads are, they were, they were constructed with, within the last decade or so, so. You can see a situation of someone, because now that every road is a scenic road. If there's less consciousness of what, what it means to be a scenic road, so someone puts their own stone wall, almost as a decoration there.
Not a public, not a.
No, I, I understand, but is there a level where, like, then if you alter that, you can find for that, it's. Yeah, I know, but some people don't know where the line is. Yeah, I don't know.
I'm just saying, that's, that's where I, 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 I completely smacked that wall.
I think of it as a protected road by law, and so a scenic road by law, I believe, much more. Act destructions.
Okay, so my turn for the, um, so again, hopefully that was out, because I'm gonna tell the audience that, I don't quite understand what we're trying to know this year. Um, we're talking about stone walls that are on public place, correct? So no one's got a right to alter that wall already, correct? So all this by law is gonna do is reinforce, then you don't have the right. No?
Only on scenic designated roads, and so walls protected.
Okay, so, but here I said, so, um, any stone wall today, uh, that is on the public right of way, whether it's scenic road or not, right? I, if I have the house that's in, in front of it, I still don't have a right to go take that wall down. Right? Right, so first, okay, so, um. By passing this bylaw, um, Kevin, all I done is reinforce that I don't have the right. I don't really understand what it is that I can do today under the current law, um, that. I won't be able to do if this final passes, yes, it emphasizes it, it makes it clearer. But what can I do today that I won't be able to do if this final passes on its, on the roads that now be scenic roads? Okay, so Marty, I'll get you, and by the way, I heard your meeting, where you were very clear about, I know what you've done as far as going around and looking and trying to truly help ourselves. That is a great, you know, it's very helpful, but answer that question.
Right, so nothing changes. It's in a public right way, so as a, as a citizen, there's zero impact on you. It's the process that changes and how it's managed administratively in the town. So I think importantly, um, I did conduct diligence, I drove. Seventy percent of sixty streets listed, listed, um, and, um, in order to basically validate. My research, which I looked at other neighborhood towns, Ashland, Hopkinton, Sudbury, Wayland, Marlborough, North Borough, with all of their language. The language identified eight characteristics with which they define scenic roads, they're all different, they use different types of criteria. The, the characteristics included. A tree, has a public tree on it, it has a stone wall on it. It's a nat- a natural or manmade border, there's an orchard, there's a field. Alteration planned or likely in the future, it's pretty nebulous, but that was a characteristic. Alteration with less than value, that's nebulous, but it's still a characteristic in other towns. Age and historic significance of roads, trees, stone walls was characteristic number seven. I mean, number six, number seven was built features, such as buildings, monuments, burial grounds, fencing. And the last was road features such as historic layout with use restrictions, not historic bridges. So I, I felt that I should go look and see of those streets that we listed, what, where do they rank? So they all had a public shade tree. Um, and they all had at least two items from this list of eight. So. They weren't all same two, but they were listed on this, so I, from my perspective, okay, from a town. Relatively looking at the, um, characteristics that other towns would look like. And then looking what we've done, see, like you said, nineteen seventy five, we put in a couple of scenic roads, nineteen seventy eight, we sent them, them all, they, they were all qualified. So after my diligence and research, it became perfectly clear to me that scenic does not equal, we call it picturesque, beautiful. Scenic in Southborough is protected trees and stone walls, and that's how it's been defined. And I think that we should proceed with that definition, and we shouldn't try to make, as we call it, picturesque or scenic. Because that's not how it's been defined through the other streets that we've accepted through our process.
Every single one of those towns has, does not have a blanket scenic road by law, so they've all tried to define what they need, so, so.
Some more so, some have been very refined, and I have all of the backup slides, you can. Like to, you know, when I am, you can use to review those. Um, but I think the point is, is that some have tried very broadly, some have tried very narrowly, and you do see towns that have adopted it that way. And I think importantly, we have not. And I think the other important aspect of why this town meeting, why we're seeing it grow now. If you are a town, personally moving to town and coming to town. And you get, you get a notice from the town, this is one of the Southborough, if you do not live on a numbered street or a highway, your road is scenic. Your public shade trees and your stone walls are protected, and you are not allowed to do anything in those, with those public right of way, public shade trees or stone walls. Makes it certainly a lot clearer for someone moving to town, they don't have to figure out if their street is scenic or not. Every road is scenic administratively, and it's extraordinarily easy for our process to actually work, the one that we set in meeting has worked so hard for. That is very clear to the tree warden that it's not numbered or a highway street, it should be part of the process.
Okay, so I am, um, in the construction, I'm on the fence, I need more story, Andrew, when you see that, so I think what we do tonight, so you've heard, um, Andrew's against, I'm, I think I'm against. Lisa is on the fence, I was against, so she's moved by the, right, right, Sam is for, we don't know what chance it's gonna be, so we will talk again on, um, thirteen that are pre-timed. Uh, you guys have a pre-timed, we said we do get, right? Um, we'll, we'll, we'll get with you, we need to, as far as that goes. And we may end up, as we need to, the actual town, we need to truly, um, sign out and file this vote and let, ask people who's free to, I don't know, so.
Maybe one more, huh?
Yes, you may.
To try to range of your question, and Marty, correct me if I'm wrong, but. The process standpoint, I think passing this actually doesn't really have any impact on stone walls for people. But it does have an impact on trees by requiring, um, additional hearing, basically. Or trees that are on any, some things, road and down.
The process is exactly the same for the person, is they still submit a request for a public hearing on a public shade tree.
Right, but, but today, if someone has a public shade tree on a, uh, non scenic road. That is something that comes to the selection of trees.
Correct, yep.
With this bylaw passed, that's a, that to me is an excellent protection here, that is what I see, we get that.
I would concur, I think for the person submitting that request, nothing changes, it's the process on our end.
Yes. But really, not in fact, in stone walls.
Or more administrative, if you talk about a ten percent hearing, just kind of, so you do a little bit, a little bit, sorry. Okay, so anybody else who's ever wanted to talk about our two?
Just saying, no matter where, we all may fall, thank you for, obviously, all the hard work that you guys supported this over, especially you, Marty, I mean. I thought I did a lot by driving the media and I go, I'm gonna do my own trees, but we didn't hit nearly the amount of roads that you did, so I, I can manage for that, I will.
So you remember when, um, in May, when this was discussed, um, there certainly was at least some people that were interested in identifying a group of roads that might be scenic, right? So that would happen this one, are you prepared to talk about what that, this might look at, like, or you just want to not go there?
Can, I just, one comment. We can certainly say what, how many streets of, you know, has certain, uh, characteristics, how many fellows, like, if we live in a day. Um, I think my worry is that if you do this this time, we have to go retrospectively and look back, what doesn't qualify for scenic. So I just think it creates more, who, who really has the capacity and the ability, any of us sitting at this table to do that?
Totally, totally get that, and totally agree, um, but I have heard from more than one person, um, well, can we not go back and undo, you know, this again? And actually do look at them also, really, the group of, so. Yeah, that might get said today, I wouldn't be surprised if we don't hear that, and, um, from you too, so we'll see. So it sounds like, um, I'm not surprised, it was much, um, essential, as I actually thought this was gonna be easier to, in case, um. So, um.
Well, that is, Dave Andrew is a scenic evaluator.
I'll pass the time.
Marty, I'm disappointed that during your drive, you weren't able to accidentally. Hit that tree on the D five, cause we're here, that's hanging over the dead tree, put it out of its misery.
That's a number of roads, that's not the scenic, it's not one that's.
I like the special signs that say scenic road, we don't have enough money to buy a sign for every single road segment.
So every single sign looks the same.
One sign, it's kind of mine, all.
Thank you.
But I did all the work, um, you guys, remember what you're, you're, you're. So now, um, Mr. Mario is gonna be, um, talking about her articles, if the three of you are gonna stay, uh, if you guys are gonna stay, uh, you probably need to. Keep the meeting discussion, if not.
Oh, that's not something that's.
It's, no, you're still all three here, um, so.
But it's not that I don't know that's important, I'm sorry.
Alright, so you consider this petition.
Yeah, that's.
Oh, the planning board is adjourned, the cert, uh, mills, do I hear a motion?
Still moves.
In a second.
I have a motion in a second, and a discussion, all the data, let's roll, yes.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, yes, Mary, yes.
Thank you, thank you, Andrew.
Thank you guys for coming.
Thank you. Okay, so I am going to take one item out of order, it's relevant to what's next, so I'm gonna move, uh, the. This should have been an address report, but, um, it's the. Um, agenda is listed as, um, for the sudden, which is updating on the post Saint Mark's school. So move it up, this is relevant to one of the citizens that we're talking about, thank you. Okay, um, okay, so after our May thirty first meeting, supporting, which we discussed, not received with the completion of the pocket park. Mr. Purple, Mr. Fab, and I, in a meeting with St. Mark's, on which we requested that St. Mark's enter into a land swap, which is a town for two parcels that are subject to the license agreement. Signed in two thousand twenty one by the select board and Saint Mark's School that allowed the work on the park to begin. We did this in large part because significant concern, some residents had about spending certain funds designated for town roads. On property that we did not hold title to. It also simply made sense to do this, the land swap is in much cleaner transaction than even the license agreement for our potential business. Saint Mark's School has three land swaps that, uh, we ended with last week, um. The attorneys for both entities have talked, they agreed on the transaction, which is pretty simple, and quickly, it's, um, for me. Um, they are working currently on a, we're in the understanding as far as the details of what will happen. It will require a town to be vote, because we are getting upland, um, we didn't get it done in time, we did it on this one, so. Um, so we're gonna have to wait till, um, springtime to actually put our, um, to approve our piece of that. Um, Saint Mark's, we have to do, um, you guys, we do. Um, there's no money involved in the transaction at all, even though the parcel, Southborough receipt is larger than the parcel it would be to school, um, therefore presumably valuable. Um, we are sincerely, sincerely, sincerely appreciate Saint Mark's agreement to land swap, the transaction need be approved by two thirds of, um, so we keep that, Marty, uh, next time we need. Um, at one of our upcoming select board meetings, um, probably the eighteen, um, the steps to complete the park will be on the agenda again. By then, the Saint Mark's Street Park working group will have had their public forum, which is Thursday, um, that's scheduled for the Public Safety Bill at seven o'clock. Right? Uh-huh, I swear this, um. So what, Heather, to finalize, hopefully, we sign the part, um, will be say. So what happens to finalize, hopefully, the signed apart, um, will be say one or two steps toward that end. The archaeological dig, um, that St. Mark's, um, paid for, contracted for, has been completed, and the borough board for receiving contractor. Conducting surveys of there are no interns in the area designated for the proposed park. So the upcoming meeting select board will decide whether to restart the project, infrastructure work, so that is complete for the whole winter. And specify the critical path to complete the park. Um, I don't think the eighteenth intended is to inform to not include that, we have to see, so it's usually entirely another person. Um, and to be clear, the E H Perkins contract that Karen Galloway assigned. That she labeled every streets does include, um, money to basically finish the infrastructure of the park. And it also includes money for the actual park itself, so we've got to get that also without. But it's also my understanding that if we don't complete the work this season, that E H Perkins has requested. That a change will be executed, so that part, that part is removed, so we have to start over as far as kind of potential, and so. So we've got, um, a incentive to finish the infrastructure part of the. Portion of the park before the winter gets there, and hopefully have a little bit better, so that we can win, and then maybe have the park done, uh, swing, or the summer, et cetera. Will be one possible, possible company. Okay, any questions on that?
Just one for Andrew, actually, is the form going to be recorded? Either by an owl or by Sam, or just if somebody can't make it, and is interested in, in, uh, sharing with the session?
I think we discussed that, and that the answer is no, because if the format is there's going to be. Small group breakout sessions, where it's just not more with power.
Okay, so you could talk about it, break it down, say, do the work with the, if I, Mr. Charles, don't need it tomorrow, it's such. Alright, so with that, our next idea is a citizen petition for, um, the subject of meeting this morning. So, um, I am not prepared to take a presentation or anything on Article twelve, I want to tell the meeting. Um, I mainly here, you know, I think that we've, um, discussed it a little bit last time, but I guess just a couple other words to be said. Um, and I of course want to answer any questions. That you might have, I guess to start, because you all heard me just a little while ago, does, does anybody have any questions? I have kind of just a couple notes that I wanted to take a look at and just kind of share with you. First, I wanted to, um. Address the comments that were made at the end of, I think it was the last word meeting, and I feel very, um. In a way sad, that there's some, um, people that felt that, you know, I didn't answer all their questions. And I certainly didn't need to do that, I really tried when I was collecting signatures, trying to get as much, you know, give people as much time. Um, and in fact. There were some people that wanted to talk about free speech, um, and it was kind of fun. Um, but if there's anybody that, you know, who's answered to you, um, you know, they left without answers, that, you know, I'm sorry about that. And, um, but thank you for signing the petition, and this allows me to, um, you know, bring it to town meeting, and they can of course vote no, if that's what they would like to do. So I just wanted to, um, mention that. And the other thing is, um. I wanted to just talk a little bit about why the barrel round, because basically what I, um, what I mentioned that. Um, the idea of coming up with a, a policy for flags, it's not a new topic, it goes back. Um, it, you know, there's same sort of information on mascots, and, um. You know, anytime something pops up, the idea about, um, a banner, or a mascot, or a flag as speech comes up. And so this is sort of what I see as the, the next thing, and for me, it was a big thing. Obviously, you had a hearing last year, you heard from a bunch of people in town in different feelings, but I thought what I would do is just start off to talk about a little, about the old barrel round. Because my citizen petition is specific to the old barrel round. Um, so just briefly, the old barrel round, um. Came out, I guess, because it was on the, um, first warrant, uh, our first warrant of the first. Town meeting held in seventeen twenty-seven. So just to be clear, the old barrel round is not a military, that barrel round, it's not a veteran's, that, your barrel round. Um, it was the seventh article, and I just wanted to read it to you. Um, because I'm not going to do this at town meeting, but since I know I have a little bit of time, I'm trying not to waste too much of my time. But it said, then proposed and voted that the place or piece of land next of the way west of Timothy Brigham's house. Formerly ruled indeed in order for a varying place, should be the varying place for our town, in case it can be obtained. And so that is the burial place of the town, so it's, it's not, it wasn't set aside for, um, veterans or, or, um. Military or anything like that. And in fact, it was used from, uh, the historian will correctly, but I, you know, seventeen twenty-seven. I suppose when the town, um, first came to be, to about eighteen forty, when it was toothful, and then they had to use the rural cemetery. Um, and, but basically, the, you know, who's in that cemetery, I think is also interesting to know. Um. There are more women and children in that cemetery than men, and there's about less than eight percent are, um, veterans. And, um, so I think that's kind of just in, interesting information. Um, what I wanted to focus on is, um, you know, uh. Why the citizen petition? So, um. When I first heard about the Supreme Court, um, decision, which was, I guess the decision was in May of this year, but I didn't find out until, you know, Boston Globe in August. I think some of you guys know that I, I've sent emails and text messages, and I think, and I apologize to Kathy, because I sent, I think maybe three messages in one day. But it became, uh, clear to me that that was, it's a pretty important decision. And I felt that, um, this is probably the time that, you know, we need to, um, maybe have a policy on flags in town. And so, um, this is not meant to be any disrespect to any veterans, um, I've had some wonderful conversations with veterans. Um, I had, uh, one person who said, you know, I fought for free speech. But if it means that our town center has, you know, all kinds of, um, flags, political, what's face, that flag lives matter, all kinds of things. I don't want to see that in my town. I, I like free speech, but not right there. And so what I found in, in talking to people about the citizen petitions, that there's people really, let's say, both sides. Um, that appreciate free speech, fought for free speech, but that doesn't mean that, that, um, any one group can speak for the government. So that's what the Supreme Court decision is all about, is based on the Boston City Hall example, where they routinely fly flags of basically any group that asks them. And people who work by there say, yeah, you see flags of, you know, different countries, you see the pride flag, there's pride parade, you see all kinds of things. And I think over the last twenty years, there's been something like two hundred and eighty-nine different flags that have flown. And, um. They had never denied anybody until several years ago, and they denied, I'm sorry, I don't remember the camp or something, I don't know what it's called. Uh, but they wanted to fly the Christian flag, and they were denying, and they were denying they had no policy. And so, um, first, um, they won that case, and then the group appealed to the Supreme Court because of free speech. Um, and so it's a Supreme Court case, um, that I want to talk about, because the group thought that their rights were violated. And first, I just want to mention, um, you know, flags are speech. They have meaning, and they have different meanings to different people, and they can also change over time. And I've sort of been using this example to, um, people I've spoken to, you know, you could put, uh. A Walmart flag, let's say, and someone will say, I don't like Walmart, and someone will say, I shopped at Walmart. Okay, but what's the meaning of the flag when it's there? It means more to the person who puts the flag there than the actual meaning of the flag, oftentimes. So the US Supreme Court decision, um, was, um, basically this Boston City Hall, um, case, and, um. What the ruling was, is that without, I'm just going to read to make sure I hit the spread, without a municipal flag policy. The city is creating a public forum for speech and cannot control what is being said. Um, so that's, that's interesting, right? And also, the city cannot deny some flags while allowing others. Um, and so they had, in the name of free speech, City Hall had been opening up their, you know, allowing flags to fly on the third flag pole. They fly the United States, uh, America, they fly, I think, the Massachusetts flag, and there's a third pole, and they hadn't allowed anybody. But by controlling and not allowing some private groups, now they are getting in the business of, um. You know, controlling, um, you know, creating, um, or controlling the content. So in the wake of that decision, um, you know, I'd say, I looked at like dozens of articles of towns that are now trying to figure out type policies. Um, not just in Massachusetts, because it's Supreme, US Supreme Court. Um, and, uh, you know, it's quite interesting, um, there are some towns that are flying the Ukraine flag. Some people pretty upset about it, and they're having conversations just like we're going to have next Thursday. Um, there's some towns that are flying, um, uh, considering, um, what to do about pride parade. Because they've allowed, uh, rainbow flags to fly during a pride parade, but it's on public property now. Um, and so should they allow that? And it's kind of painful to watch, in a way, to see what different towns are doing, I mean, there's a number in Massachusetts. Um, that already have policies, and even if they have a policy, they're going back and reviewing the policy. Um, because I think this is a pretty important Supreme Court, um, decision. Um, Andrew, you're the lawyer, you can correct me if I'm, I'm wrong. You know, I mean, about that case, or did I say anything wrong?
Well, wh- what I think, I think will be helpful if. We have not had a town council speak on this yet, I think, kind of. Um, to advise the town, basically, I think the premise of what you're saying is that is unconstitutional. The placement of the present placement of the flags can be. Old burial ground, I, I, I do not know if that's the case, based on my reading. I, I read this.
No, I actually didn't say that, um, I don't think that, I mean, from the impression that I got, and I'm, I'm pretty wrong, is that. I'm not sure that there's an official request from, we're talking about the, the veterans' flags that are flying? I, I don't know that there's been anything that the town has engaged in that's on doing. Um, I mean, if there's no official request from the veterans, then, then there's nothing on file that says, yes, we, we said yes to this group and, and no to this group. In my impression, it's just a matter of time before that happens. Um, and I also think, um, you know, one of the things, there's a couple of different things that popped up in the Supreme Court article. Um, one of, one of the things that's interesting is I think that they, um, there was mention about also allowing groups to put up their flags, and, um, they. The town has to put up the flag, so if, if, if the town is, um, um, speaking, you know, they, they have to put up the flags, they can't allow other groups to put up flags. Um, and another, um, kind of subtext that I thought was interesting is about the policy. It seems like Boston City Hall submitted a proposed policy, um. As part of their papers or something like this. And the, the advice that was given to them, and this is in the decision, was to keep it simple and to actually follow. I have to look it up, I think it's, I think it's San Diego, but I'm not sure, where it, it says something, the policy is something very general. If, if you're not general, you're in a very, very specifics, right, so, yeah. Uh, only, something like this, only the flag of the United States of America will fly on public property. And the flag of the state of, you know, Mass, can, the rare, Massachusetts, may also be flown. That's, that's the recommendation that's in some of the texts that's coming from the Supreme Court. And I think that's the text that I'm seeing come through. Um, and, you know, it doesn't just apply to old burial grounds, um, but you have to ask yourself, like, well, we have a veterans' and a all wars memorial. Um, but I, I think that nation's use, I've gone around and looked at other, um, burial grounds, other have, other people have to. Many, many towns have no flags at all in the cemeteries. Um, you know, it might be better to mark, maybe use markers or something like that, with what's going on in that cemetery anyway. But, um, typically, there, there isn't a flag, and if there is, it's just, it's just one, and to think about it, it's right, you know, kind of in a congested area, where we've got the all wars, we've got, you know, townhouse. Um, but, um. So that, you know, to stand up policy that's high level like that doesn't mean you have to have a flag. Doesn't mean if you have the American flag, you have to have a Massachusetts flag, but what it's, what it's doing is basically saying. These are the flags that we're going to fly on, on, on public property. So then now we're getting away from the old burial ground, which I think this is really a discussion about, that I would, the citizen petition. To limit it to the old burial ground, because obviously, there are flags there, right? But, um, that's not to say who can't go put up flags in rural, rural cemetery tonight. And the question then is, well, what's the slogan, we're going to do about it, you know? And what if there has to be a fight? What if there's like a little war over messages? Then our public property is turning into circus, and it gets into that discussion point that the Supreme Court said is. If you allow it, you can't control the content, you can't control that speech. So that's kind of interesting to me, I, um, you know, I think that we need a flag policy. Um, I think it, one that, something as simple as, you know, US flag and. Flag or combo of Massachusetts flag, that's simple. Um, but that's my work article. You're not asking us to, um, develop overall policy, you're asking specifically to develop policy for the old burial ground. Um, I think, I think that, yeah, it is correct, that's what this warrant article is, um, but, I mean. The issue is that we have a war memorial, we have the all wars memorial, so if you write something like, only the flag of the United States, and maybe even Massachusetts flag will be flown. That doesn't apply to that memorial, so it seems to be that you have to give that part a little bit of thought. Um, but, you know, I would be asking for you to write a policy. Um, for all, all properties, and I think it should be thoughtful anyway, you know, to, for example, I don't know, do all of our town properties have a flag? Do all our buildings have a flag? Um, do other cemeteries have a flag? I mean, I just think it's kind of an interesting, um, question, and maybe, maybe it's fine, just, you know, the way it is. But I think the, I think there should be a, a general policy, um, and. What we come up with for the old burial round, and I suggest it's just the American flag, but we'll see if it's amended. Um, but that, I think, should be the policy for the town. But is the reason for your, or since it does focus on specific building grounds, because there are flags there now, other than the American, is that why your focus is because? Um, you are, you don't agree with the flags that appear? No, I don't agree that there should be flags there. I, I, so the flags have, then you could say, uh, Starbucks, Dunkin' Donuts, Target, Walmart, it doesn't, like, something like that, and I, and I think I would look at it and say, why are there flags there? And, um, so this isn't about me or, or those particular flags, although I think that you have to, you know. You, you have to hear what people have said last year, there, there are clearly people that are offended, and the select board's taking no action. And, you know, that's troublesome to me, because, um, you know, we have one group that's speaking for the town, and that's exactly, and that is what's happened. That, that is what the Supreme Court said you can't do. If you allow speech, you can't control the speech, so that means that, that, and that's why I was kind of, you know, sending emails, saying, I think that we really need to take those flags down. Personally, because I think you don't care about this town, and I think it leaves us open to, you know, some sort of, you know, litigation, to be honest. I think that's why everybody's trying to, you know, address this with a policy now. I think that's why everybody's trying to, you know, address this with a policy now. Because, you know, you, by, by leaving or allowing one group, how are you gonna say no to the next group? And, and it will come. It will come, why? Because of the Supreme Court decision. So, you know, tomorrow, somebody could be asking you to put up a flag. And, you know, either right there for there, you know, the old burial ground, or, or someplace else. And, and I think that we need to be prepared. So let's start with little, Mr. Secretary.
I think it was Sam, who's a Californian, the Supreme Court legislature. I guess, I'm still in listening mode on this. I think that we, as policymakers, may decide to write a policy on this. And I think it's incumbent on us to listen to all sides of the issue. We've done some of that, and we're headed toward town meeting to listen more. So personally, I'm not ready to take a position on this, or I don't want to hear people that say. So I guess if we vote on this, I'm gonna abstain at this point. I'm gonna listen to town meeting, and then we're gonna address the policy. Let's see what happens. So I, I heard, obviously, tonight, I heard they make the same kind of comments that other groups around. So I think your views on this one. I heard that recently, but last year, veterans groups, their views of this. And I think there are other views to counter me. So once I heard that, then I'm gonna make a decision on it. Thank you.
Please. Um, obviously, I would certainly not vote on this without one never gone and one wanting to abstain. But I, I agree, Sam, with the premise that, I look forward to hearing what town meeting has to say on this. I'd like to hear from council regarding, as, as you mentioned, the.
The people in the Supreme.
Yeah, I would certainly like to hear that as well, certainly. I'm more happy.
Um, Andrew.
Yeah, I would also like to have town council, hold tight on how this, the Supreme Court decision applies to the placement of the flags at the, the flags that we're talking about are by, are by a memorial to the Revolutionary War veteran. So I think that's the, as to the flag, there is a, as to the vote that we took last summer about there's a request to fly the Indian flag to commemorate Independence Day or something like that. And that, basically, the type of policy, the town's, other than the American flag there, there's no flags flown. So I want to know whether there's a.
I mean, if I can figure that out, that's actually the US flag code. That no person tells the flag of the United Nations or any other national, international flag. Evil, above, any position, superior, prominence, or honor to, to fly in the United States. So that's one code, I went back and I pulled, I was, I was curious. Is to, it was US flag, oh, it's section 7G, position and annual display.
Again, they did ask where to fly next to the American flag.
Well, and, and it was only one flag board, right? So in order to fly another nation, you can't, you can't do that according to US code. So that was one of the reasons why.
I have a plan, right? So we'll see, go ahead.
Yeah, I would like to have.
So I'm also not prepared to take this initiative, but for a different reason. This is a, you know, this article is that, it's not funny, right? It's basically asking, tell me whether they would vote to, we'd ask, that the flag will do something. Now, we've seen this before, there was a review in 2019, right? And the pilot one was that, please, instead of doing this, you know, that they, it's not mandatory. It's not something that we have to do. So since we're being asked to do something, that then if we did, we do it after town meeting, right? So I'm interested to see what town meeting says. So we understand what town meeting really would like to see the flag will do. If you see an overwhelming response to this article, then that tells you something. Again, you know, you don't have, you know, we don't have 10,000 people, town meeting, we've got a very small group. It's not necessarily representative of what 10,000 people, that's what we've got, right? So I am very interested in seeing how the town meeting plays out as far as what it said and what's the vote is. If there's no, again, overwhelming one way or another, that helps me understand what I think the group should do as a next step. But I just want to see any point, especially tonight, and take a decision, because this is, as, we're taking this for something we've been asked to do. But we do it after town meeting, we're not doing that, or she's asked, we're telling you to ask us to do this, right? That's clear? That's fair? All right, so it sounds like we're not ready to take a decision on this one tonight. We will talk about it again, it's 6:00 on the 13th, which I'll see here, right? And then, again, decide whether we want to officially take a decision, then, uh, or the company, and this is what we'd say. And we will move on then, or not.
And I, I do think it makes sense that we seek out the opinion of town council.
So we mentioned, so we get that, of course, and obviously, how these, how he says, the Supreme Court's really, um, Supreme Court case really does guide us first, but. Can you share that with me? Sure, yeah. I've already mentioned advisory board in court, too. They're going to support this one. And I don't know, I didn't hear the government announcement, or the two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten. All right, so, thank you, well, thirteen. Okay, Kevin's going to go in for thirteen. Can we put it up? Oh, we, I have, you guys now have the slides that we, they, can we, can we show it? Or, or we have paper copies to talk to, so, yeah.
So, or thirteen. The genesis of this one was that we saw that our town meeting warrants kind of about.
Yeah, you heard it yourself, from the other.
Oh, sure. And thirteen, fifteen, I wrote, co-sponsored, I guess, for Article thirteen, with my other director. And also member of the conservation commission and stewardship committee. So when the draft town meeting work came out, especially, we were a little surprised, but there's nothing actually back to mark some of that, the triangle. After it went down, saying, back in May, Article twenty-five, and the select board said they have a chance to present, they're gonna be at that. We were expecting it to come back. Also, that if family went there on the St. Mark's Street Park, having to endure a lot of angry comments from residents about putting in the park before a horse. It's pretty clear where people are upset, that the town's continuing to spend money on lands that we don't own. And so we were trying to think of a way out of that. And I guess it seemed to be the cleanest and easiest way. Couldn't possibly imagine going back to town meeting and asking the town to actually try to purchase the lands. But I don't think, after spending four hundred and two thousand dollars so far on this thing, and if you're gonna buy it, it's kind of a mess. A lot more to be spent on there. I'm actually setting up a town meeting to purchase it. So we came up with Article thirteen to encourage you to seek a gift from St. Mark's, the triangle. There you go, it's nice.
Well, hopefully, we can continue the conversation. You know, just learning today, we did know that you were involved in, you know, speaking with St. Mark's, the land swap. But Kevin just threw out a number, and, you know, I think it's worth, you know, talking about where that number comes from. Because I know that some of the, I, I don't tune into the St. Mark's group a lot, but I do hear a lot of neighbors and stuff talking about the $290,000 grant. But there's also the $105,000 for the design, and then the $7,000 for the, that was park design. So that's where that 400 and, oh, 700, $7,600. That's where that $402,000 comes from. And, you know, I guess what I would like to say is, there's a lot of things, I think you've heard of them all about this. But the fact that, and I just, I just need to mention this, there's never been a public hearing on this. I guess you and other boards, I know, have kind of contemplated, what, what's the meaning of public comment? What's a public forum? And what's a public hearing? A public hearing is much different. And, you know, when people come together and they can, they can talk with their town leaders. And since the genesis of this, of park design, or really parking lot design, there's never been a public hearing. It's come from no permitting board. I've been very vocal that I think that it should have. But besides what I think, there's been no public hearing for people to come and speak to their leaders about this. And also having to get the documents, you know, from the press. But.
And it is a misnumber to say it's about the park.
Yeah.
Because it's about parking lot, but the parking later.
Yeah.
We have emails from our EDOT chief from August, trying to talk about moving intersections to the St. Mark's parking lot. There's no mention of the block, the block of our first team up in December, this is the twenty-one.
So I'm gonna speak to that, because I was a part of the Constitution part. We've acknowledged, more than less, that we might have done things differently with, with my side. So what we decided to do in May, after town meeting, we're clearly, we heard what was said, was to say, here we are. Do we want to, let's look at this, do we want to go forth as part of a vote with the DMs? Yes, we do. And then we decided on a series of steps that we thought would be appropriate to try to end up with the best project we could, given where we were at that point. We couldn't go back and put the dirt back, we couldn't put the trees back, we couldn't put the wall back at that point. I haven't ever heard what you just said to me, so that's news to me. So I'm not uncommon on that, because I, I have no basis to think that the genesis of this project was to build St. Mark's Park and Lot. I just don't think that's true. So tonight, we're here to hear Debbie's explanation to watch, she wants this article passed. And I don't want, I don't think it's supposed to get into that piece that I hear. Obviously, you've concerned about that, too. There's another place and time to that, but it's not tonight. Tonight is to focus on this article. And the reason I announced my land swap party is so that you know about it, because it does, it's contradictory to what you're opposed to do. I believe the average land swap was on the morning, which, and I can say we tried. We tried, I mean, I turned into a nag, a nag, a nag, a nag. It just took a while to get the attorneys to talk and get it worked out as far as it. And you just couldn't say anything to really, you know, that, you know, and you understood how the bill would take place. There were questions, St. Mark's, at first thought that we had to go get a session back to this, like we did when we did the law course. But this had nothing to do, there was a reason for that, it didn't apply here. But we had to get through that process, right? So there were just a series of questions, I believe, I promise you. We tried really hard to get to the point that it is back as far as trying to possibly get title of land, which is one of the biggest issues that was expressed at the very town meeting in May. So we really did try, we did quite make it, so it's gonna have to be marked, unless there's a proposal to amend this article to do that. And I don't know that that would work immediately, too hard out of the, or to ask for a land swap. When you're asking for a straight donation from St. Mark's, it's, I don't think that's gonna work, but I would choose it. So that we can get this thing careful and post it for the summer. And so anyway, I hear you, and I, as far as I can, I just don't think this is gonna be getting to that tonight. We are truly spending a lot of time rehashing how the steps were, we said everything we can, but we're just gonna move on at this point. We've got a big melon garden that is, that is time to deal with. And that's where we are.
Yeah, so the reason related to parking, it's, this is for the entire person, including the tip that we heard of the, fifty-five space parking lot that's proposed down there.
So Mr. Pearl has talked to St. Mark's, they are aware of your, or, you know, and they may be, they, they live somewhere, saying they'd be here. And they have basically said they're not interested in a straight donation of parking space. So we, we, they, they know about it, and we're quite surprised to hear about it, because that's not a deal that we've been talking about a lot. And they felt a little surprised about hearing about this. So, but we have, it's been mentioned, it doesn't sound like they are, would support this, even if we chose to vote on this. We're gonna vote in a second, I think, on this article, if it's supported or not. But the select board has, at this point, decided that we believe that the land swap is the only way to go. It's not a placement, it's not licensed, it's truly on land, it's only a piece of this system. All on as far as, it's one of those, I know that the planning board has issues with things that's in place. And again, it is, it is the key, that's just a fact. It's gotta try to look at what we have now, do a good job to try to manage this part, and hope that at the end of the day, that people go back and say, this is a really nice park, and we've identified it, and we're, yes, we're not, that that part is out.
So if you go back to two years and say, I can't remember, I don't know how much this is, and it costs you 400,000, 700,000, Eric, tonight, maybe send another 290,000 on the perk. Someone said it needs to be greened a lot. And, 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 so that we can go to half acres and perk. Does that deal anyone a little bit into that, Sam?
Um, that's fair, I don't think you can say yes or no. The answer might be no, but we're beyond it. So I just think that's a conversation to be held elsewhere. Tonight, we're looking at, as you said, your little white article, and trying to decide whether, um, set of workers support or not, that's what we're here to hear tonight, and that's, that's on the table for next Thursday. And nothing else is on water, just with the words.
Yeah, so, and so this article is meant to be the fastest way forward, so that we don't continue to spend money on private land. And, and so that I strongly advise of, don't continue to spend money on private land. We have the local license agreement, which means that anyone could walk away, it's a reminder notice. And, you know, all that money is ever sprayed.
So you're not swayed by the fact that we got a deal to swallow land, that's not anything else to you at all?
Because, you know, it has land that's up to that, has the registry deeds for the parts that are registered, the registry deeds.
That's what the attorney's working on, you know, they're gonna get a name, you to actually.
And, and it's not gonna go until after town meeting, if we're speaking. And that's merit and merit shift, unless you're gonna go on another special town meeting. And so until then, will this person vote for it, or will it trade out, or are we gonna be here some money off?
That's what we will say next. Once we get to the town meeting, and that part's done, then at probably the next reform meeting, which is eighteen, or at least November first, we will, let's start on the agenda to talk about the steps for at that point, the working of the book that is public forum. So we'll know how that turned out. We're pretty close to having the official report from the National Society as far as, or the, the property source. So that's the only other places to then take it back up, on the eighteen, or the first, and decide what our, after this report.
But you don't have ownership by then.
No, it's not, but we do have a right to use the land to, 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 the prior expectation has signed all of that. As far as not the addition of the fact that we're working on land that we don't own, but that they license it. Specifically in the email that this person sent, they said, he, he said, make sure you understand this, that's the.
I think the order is, it's kind of, thank you, the select board should have issues with that. This is meant to be a way out, from this past, but it sounds like we either are interested in a quick way out, so.
I just wanted to add one thing. I was thinking about, that's a residential pay property. And I actually don't know how big the pocket park is going to be, but I, what happened to go on St. Mark's School's website. And by the way, I like St. Mark's a lot, this is, I think, this is not against St. Mark's in any way. But I, I was looking for a map, actually. And their athletic field maps already list the parking lot there. It's the exact. It's the exact shape, it's it's got fifty parking spaces and um. That's kind of, that's pretty much a turn off, to to be honest, um. Uh so many processes were skipped and the thing that these discussions have happened. With St. Mark's without the public knowing, this is, I think somebody said this is kind of a retrofit camp. And it is, if you look at the earliest document that you can find, it's it was about moving an intersection. But it was really about creating car parking for St. Mark's. And that's kind of, you know, that's that's the center of our town. I really am troubled, uh not talented man, I really do, we didn't do this to build St. Mark's parking lot. This is because it's the element. So all we go to the vehicle and basically knew she has issues, it's not just the problem. Um we we got public safety saying we can't take that route. This is years before, yeah, it's happened years before.
Maybe.
Okay, so we're not here to rehash um everything that's been talked about a lot. Tonight, we're just gonna talk about two articles as far as why you think that is the, that went ago, you said it very well. Okay, and I just want, I think would be the cleanest way, because I hear you, you still need town meeting, you still need. I don't know if it's subdivision of land, I would think so, um you you're still working under. The reciprocal license agreement, and I do think that that is some of this, you know, people rejected the eastwards. More in our article for a lot of reasons, but not simply because it was easements. A lot of it had turned in the room on the license agreement and the fact that work was being done before the town voted. And that that is something that you're gonna have totally. Okay, totally not, but um you know, your your proposal is to reject this in progress, you said, no, I'm just gonna make it my second nation here. Um you know, you guys came to us, you said you wanted to do this, we wanted our um support for it, you know, we started all the way through, we said, yes, we. They, and that became an issue, so um. Is this not interested in this, the the proposition where it's all on the site, so we don't know, we're getting more back than we're giving. Um but I just don't think that I take issue with um believing that more members to my lab. Uh and Mr. Healy um did this project for the for the reason to build St. Mark's a permanent, that's just not true. I mean, I'm not sure emails we have, but we said that's they would not have done that, and um I just don't know what the. Sorry. Okay, so um.
Guys, power verification.
Sure.
So when St. Mark's is turned down, they just had a big tent out there last week, big ceremonies for the celebration they're having. I'm sure they went to places for a personal. And if they're gonna have to think about living with that through next summer, maybe. Because hopefully we're not gonna be spending money on land until we own it. I would think that could motivate them if you were at large by kind of meeting to accept the gift, maybe it'll change their mind. They will help put some trust back in this board to license or going to the parking lot back to them, but. We'll play for a little trust, right?
But you know, we went over there, we asked them to do, we got a one state, we asked, we said, would you now be willing to go straight swap the land? They said, we'll consider it, they came back and said, yes, um this, and then to go back again and say, never mind, we want to change again. Want to do on site, this doesn't seem fair, this doesn't seem appropriate, they played ball, ball on as far as things we asked this part, so. Um we'll see what the other members are saying, maybe they 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 want to do this, so uh I will add an emphasis because we worked so hard to get to the point. We have a part as separate of this, so um I do think it's the right way to go, um needing more back than what um we're getting up. And we need to want to to build this part and they will then be able to go under the parking lot, so to me, it's a win. Um I wish, I would be more sure for that. Sorry, that. Okay, so um, Co-Formers, do you want to um take a session time on our? Of course, sorry, sorry, I think it's a good one.
So Kathy, I have a lot of things that you said, so I have obviously thought a lot about this for, you know, a part of the year. And also I've thought about, okay, the very kind of unusual situation that the town. Has found itself with this project over the last year, what are some lessons learned that we can implement going forward? And how how did this, I think one of the biggest takeaways is that. One of the things that prompted doing this project was the availability of shares script, right?
Yes.
So and the town pursued originally a number higher than two hundred and ninety thousand dollars for it, right? It's got two hundred and ninety thousand dollars and one of the things that wasn't as communicated as well as it could have been. And under thinking through all the implications, was there was a string attached with, which was originally what the town got the grant. The money needed to be spent by May thirty first, two thousand and twenty one. And there was not, in retrospect, a real a realistic um plan for. Thinking about how, you know, the 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 project was gonna cost more than that in total. And thinking about how all of this would fit together, particularly in something complicated where the work was being done on a. Arson of land, when I say mark, it was subject to an agreement to swap easements and that. Okay, so now I think, and this is something that was discussed at the select board bull setting meeting in July. Thinking, I think Mark made the point that next time we think about the availability of grants, rather than just kind of. Doing what we're trying to get the grant, think more carefully about how are we gonna, once we get this money, implement all of these things, so. Because the two hundred and ninety thousand dollar grant was. Obtained and and then the deadline extended was extended, extended, extended. The the last extension was December thirty, two thousand and twenty one. That's what prompted the work to begin, and by the nature of the project, was. Taking up the trees, doing the messiest part of the work. One of the things that prompted the whole thing was the tree, the notice of the tree removal on um. Eighty five, yeah, so that's where this whole thing started to come off then. Of um by that point, the road, the infrastructure for the road that are employed, you can see that there's um. Granite pipes that are encased in concrete there, so when you reach a point where. From this side of the table, what is the best thing to do for the town to look for, I think that we've been looking for a way to complete the project. In a way that is gonna be best for the term for the town uh in La 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 Rock. I think it sounds like for the presentation that you were prepared to make at a town meeting, something that really focuses. On some of the flaws in the process, we got to where we are, but from this side of the table. We have to think about, okay, how do we improve things, how do we fix this situation? And kind of the the border has already been drawn by the new road, and I thought the three things that. The board has worked very hard on to try to improve since the the May town meeting are. The status of a land ownership, which I'm very pleased, and I think um Kathy deserves a lot of credit for all the time that she put into these discussions with. St. Martin, it's just not that easy, it's going to them saying, give us the land and uh you know, for nothing. Uh I just think that that tactic, there's a way to approach a negotiation, but I think the way that Kathy has conducted. Is more appropriate way to do that. Second was the question about whether there were unmarked burials, that there was a process put in place for that, that is. Coming closer to the inclusion of a third piece was um people with, another thing we kind of uh. That is a lesson learned is there were meetings that discussed a a conceptual plan for the proposed part. In January of two thousand and twenty one. And there seemed to be some interest in it, but then, when it was put out to bid the first time, the number was too big. It was then included into the bid with the three other things. And to get the number lower, there were some changes made to the plans that didn't fit the same public thing that the concept plans talking. So there's been a lengthy process to try to get input from different boards about. Features of a part that will be more appealing, so we made progress on on the type of land ownership. The question about whether there were unmarked burials there, the design features of it. At a certain point, we just need to move forward, and I think at this point, it sounds like a lot of this presentation, that it may be focused on. Making criticisms of the way the town do things um you know, eighteen months ago, just in terms of what decisions we have to make now. They're not very helpful or informative about what we do.
I appreciate what you're saying, but you're talking about basically spending more money, and actually, this is spending no money. Uh you know, we, I mean, people from the audience have been asking, right? You know, I think what you're saying, if I hear you correctly, is we're already in so deep, we really need to finish. And so you'll have a a small pocket park that costs, what, half a million dollars or something?
You don't know what that number is.
No, it's, we're already in, you know, the range, we're already at four hundred thousand with the designs and the. And the great, you know, and the money and stuff like that, so this is really a difference in philosophy. And you have to kind of look and see how do you, how do we get it, sure, thank you for doing that, because it sounds like you've been reflecting, but you've gone back and you've taken a look. And the board knows that this is the thing that could have been done better, but I think that we're also trying to look forward and let. St. Mark's know, well, first of all, there's a lot of people that don't want a parking lot there. And when you look at the shape and size of the original parking lot, which never had permission, by the way. This is maybe about four times bigger, we counted like fifty, fifty three, something like that parking spot. And this is a, this is like the the town jewels, I don't think that's something really to celebrate, that we're gonna get a small little. I'm sorry, Kathy, I know you worked hard, but the 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 town will get a small parcel and it'll be a nice park or something when it's done. But that, there's gonna be a giant parking lot in our town center, that that's.
They all, they all have a land.
Yes, but they, they.
Actually, yeah, it's called on the land on the road.
The reason it's big is because of the swap, that's about twenty five, I I counted out twenty five extra spots. Because of the swap, where the, where it's our public property, so the town is giving up something. They're, we're gonna end up with something and getting a parking lot, they get a good parking lot.
So if you really play this out and you say, we're, I'm so dissatisfied with how this happened, let's just blow this whole thing up. So then I will lead to a termination of a reasonable license agreements, and then St. Mark's would end up with um the the um. Park north, they can keep parking there and improve where they want it, and then the top of the park at the south of the new road, that also goes to St. Mark's. They 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 sometimes park there even during the summer, that's not, that's not the situation for the town.
Well, it's theirs, it is their property now, and um parking is, um you know, we talked about this, you know, it's under the government. Parking is um considered reasonable regulation, so they've been very, you know, generous to town, obviously, and kind of come to the boards. For permitting and things like that, and one of the things that, you know, makes us like knee deep in this stuff is that no, no, there's been no permitting. But under the government, parking is subject to reasonable regulation, that others other exemptions, but parking is reasonable. And they have not come to the, they're advertising for a parking lot on their website, but they haven't come to the town.
Also, just when you're using the phrase like knee deep in it, like, it's just very strange how. What really started off as just a pretty simple proposal to swap easements where there's, there's benefit to St. Mark's and there's benefit to the town. The town gets to basically expand some of the public area worth of the library, it's just amazing how through the last. Eighteen months, this has turned into something so incredibly controversial and really, I mean, I thought a lot about this, there are some. Process steps that can be improved upon, but uh the suggestion that there's something nefarious.
No, I didn't mean like this nefarious, no, I mean, we don't necessarily need to move forward, I didn't mean that there's anything nefarious. But we've heard board members say, they don't wanna raise, you know, the the senior paying ten dollars more uh for a a sticker at the transfer station. But we know, when you're in the middle of something like this, and you can't tell us how much more it's gonna be, this is gonna be about a half an acre. That's gonna be at what, you know, how much for this half acre, it would be nothing that we would really prospectively define as something that we want. It's easier to blow the thing up and say, let them have their land, and they'll come for parking, they'll they'll get their permit for parking. You know, properly and and whatever, and I hope they plant a lot of grass, and it will cost us nothing. That that I think is is, you know, to ask them, we please consider that they don't want parking in the middle of our, you know, our our downtown. And if they say no, they say no, why do we need to say?
That's the intersection, that's the.
Yeah.
I'm not sure why we're in the intersection to begin with, but that is something.
We moved it, we moved that intersection in two thousand and eight, actually, to kind of line it up, not for St. Mark's. But it lined up, it turned out that it was prevented, it lined up a little bit better, and maybe it's, you know, fire chief or whatever, but that's when we lost. In two thousand and eighteen, the certification um uh license agreement, that that's when we, we lost a little strip. Not lost, but we um we licensed that strip so they could have this the stone wall by the athletic field. So we already played with that intersection in two thousand and eight, so anybody who's been there a lot of years knows, it used to be a little bit kind of crazy. It was a little bit more norm, so it was just straightened out, and it turned out it was beneficial of all those sites and things like that. So it's really odd that we're moving an intersection again. It's really odd that we're moving it again, and instead, you know, if this is the town that we love, we should have said, you know. Speak to the trustees of the library, find out that, you know, how many months do they report that there's water, you face, you know, flooding us in this case, so the drainage is working. Um years and years, we shouldn't have been thinking about that, but what to do now, well, that's gonna be fixed. I say think at all, give it back to St. Mark's and make it rain, and ask them, please don't ruin our downtown parking. I know, so you know, we have to spend more money on it.
Yeah, that's, so we could talk a long time about this, but I I I would not support this part for another reason is if. For people who are not as into the minutia of this, this reading something like this, someone that this is the only unit to go. They get the impression that reading this that um St. Mark's wants to give a gift to the town itself or this entire parcel. Is it, you know, like, if the town wants to consider taking a a party, a parcel by hand domain, this. The preferred tactic to uh have an article that authorizes town meeting to accept their land for nothing as kind of a pressure tactic to. Force a private property owner into a negotiation.
That was an attempt, an attempt with a hash way forward so that.
But they're not gonna do it.
What do they go for, what do they go for, do you think that would pressure them?
No.
I don't even. Same.
It was a better idea at town meeting, so. As you've mentioned, I've been involved with quite a lot, and it's one of the folks who's involved as a select board member. Earlier on, when you talked about, uh, I told you, we decided to show store water for the library. Improve intersection there, like safer intersection, and creation of the potential nice public space that we can use. And Kevin, to answer your question, yes, I take that, I take it then, I said, so take it now, actually, I think. I've talked with a lot of people about the public investment of private property, and I try to point out again. That we have a long record of doing that, actually, and a lot of them spent millions of dollars in just under the farm preservation section. Spent the million, million dollars on eighty three street, spent hundreds of thousands of dollars on the St. Mark's bell tower. Finance, we're turning. So my theory on that is that if there's something that benefits the town, we will start spending money for those kinds of things, and then that the best. I'm not in favor of this, I appreciate St. Mark's wanting us to do this, you know, I think we wind up with. I'm not in favor of this. I appreciate St. Mark's wanting us to do this deal. I think we wind up with the benefit there. I can't reveal any money. On the select war, talking about doing it for the creation of apartment spaces. Never a topic of conversation with somebody said that it's gonna be. Never a topic of conversation with somebody said that it's gonna be. All the way, why not sport it with my colleagues in the select war. Not prepared to serve this, this mark. I do appreciate your opinion. I appreciate the story. These will be the, the story.
I'm gonna keep you free because I think Sam and I do have a lot of the same ones as I have, but I just wanna say again. I, I, I appreciate you coming forward. What, for, for me is, as Sam said, when this first came about, the thing that drew me. To being able to do this was having an eighty-eight grand car. We have all seen the report, the eighty-eight report, that even our fields are eighty-eight grand at this point. Here was an opportunity for families to add to the life. To me, it was an additional space for families to come together, the kids that may not be able to go and sit by their dogs and hear, you know, a story written to them. For me, this was about having the opportunity to do something that maybe some of these families, um, you know, that have a special needs child in some way, would have a place to go. A place they had access to, pulling into the library parking lot, quick hop, stick with a John with a wheelchair or mobility walker or whatever they need. So for, for me, it was never about parking. This is the first I heard about parking, as Sam said as well. It was always about, and it still is today. I mean, I will just add that we heard town meeting. And as Kathy said, we started that right after town meeting, we had discussions, what's the best, best path forward? And being respectful to what the positions that town meeting had. So for me, and unfortunately, I can't support this. I think Kathy's done a, a lot of work and a great job coming up with one of the key points. That everybody had said was town land, the town business, whether the license, you know, as Sam said, the projects that we've done over time. Without, um, a specific easement in place, we should have started. So I would just leave it at that. And thank you for, for. Really thinking about this and thinking about another perspective and I extremely respect that. Unfortunately. I can't support it at this time, you know, just again, uh, I commend Kathy for the work that, that she did and try and find a solution. I wish it could have, as she said, come about sooner rather than later, but, um, again, thank you for.
And if we don't make sure that we're just, we will have. People who are willing to work in this kind of stuff. Okay, so this one I actually liked because we voted, we voted, um, at Chelsea, uh, this one I came from, so I might have to win votes, so. Um, we gotta vote, um, that's important, and we will actually.
Okay, so in the way that the votes pass, I make a motion that we support the article. I move we support article thirteen.
Second exception.
I'm gonna be first session. Okay, so, uh, all of the major, uh, supporting article thirteen. All the pros are.
Thank you.
Thank you guys. So moving forward, the record finding processes, some of these all. The site plan done, parking will be, uh, the store so long, which we will see if, uh, see if public shape trace be mitigated. TBD, maybe we'll talk about it in a week. Okay, moving on to St. Mark's. So now we're at middle reports, uh, and your novels. Little items change. It's not gonna be, uh, we've got some, this is gonna be an update on Saturday, St. Mark's events by Lisa.
Yes, thank you. So the reason I, I changed this was because since our last meeting, the information I was gonna share from the MMA is now we don't have it anyway. So, um, I just wanted to share that, um, Sam, Mark and I intend to be, uh, ribbon cutting for St. Mark's. So the dorms, um, it was a wonderful ceremony, a lot of work when they do it. Um, one of the things that struck me the most was when they talked about how they reclaimed, reclaimed that board mark on the wood.
Yes.
So they reclaimed the woods and some of the trees they took down. And they can build these benches on each floor. That, um, had significant meaning and knowing that it was, as well as it was other wood that was repurposed. They had solar panels on the roof, so they don't, you know, they're trying to do things now and correct now to sustainability. Um, it's a beautiful space. Um.
Is it voted?
Yes. It's, it was, it was a really nice ceremony. Um, and I just thought I would put it on here to acknowledge how wonderful it was. And I'm like, Sam, would you chair it? Or would you want to add something, Sam?
Uh, no, not really. It was great event. Delighted to be there. Uh, I think, uh, had a chance to chat with some of the St. Mark's folks. And see the very appreciative, uh, role of the town could play for helping that process, permitting, for example. And the, uh, the, the golf course land swap, uh, apparently opened the possibility for it to cite that where. This is to have access to a little bit of, of the, uh, property on southern edge of where it is. So I think they're pleased with that. And, uh, breaking the old term to the land swap on that, for those parties that happen. Hopefully, it continues to reinforce the relationship there. Uh, that's gonna be the point for us.
Thank you.
No, I, I, uh, I would just echo what Kathy just said is that, uh, you know, there could be, uh, a station. Um, that, uh, John Warren made at the. College town, who did acknowledge specifically the professor, uh, that self acknowledged two or three years. Um, you know, that is a important piece of success of any. And I do agree that, you know, that first public private furniture office, you know, this is a big deal, we know this has been helping to sustain here. Um, but, um, it, it all helps, I think, both foundation and position. But, uh, but they do, they do recognize, I think, that's the part I should help get everything started.
Sam, update us on the road, thirteen, Sam.
Yes, uh, we got, uh, apparently there have been folks that expressed concern about the intersection. At round nine of Middle Road in terms of safety there, as people try to cut all the way across from Middle Road north to Middle Road south. And the intersection sort of offsets, and that increases the distance that you have to go. It's not a perfect bigger shot across the roadway. And cars seem to be rolling along there at, uh, high rates, high rates of speed. There have been some accidents apparently. And so MassDOT does periodic road safety audits on, uh, the intersections that are problematic. So there's a team of senior engineers and several other people came out to, uh, look at the issue, review fresh data. And then go out and have a site visit to stand there, watch the cars sit by. And it was pretty impressive. If you're standing there and you see people coming along at sixty miles an hour. You, you don't get a lot of chance to move out there, so the fact is, sort of like chicken running across the road, it's, it's right at the radar. And so the, the bottom line is that, uh, in a perfect world, they'd probably like to close that crossover there. But in fact, don't seem inclined to push too hard to do it at this point, bottom line. They think they're going to need to do something to the portable roof bridge, right, like a bridge around night at some point down the road. And they might take a look at the larger area there. And they do that, but that's not on a near term plan at this point. And but they did identify a number of things that they can do to improve safety here in terms of vegetation. Uh, as you're coming southbound on Middle Road and looking toward Forterville there, right past what used to be the Red Barn, I guess is now New York Bay. Now there's vegetation that grows up and actually cuts the visibility, so you're less able to see cars coming westbound around night. So they're gonna work to try to do something about removing that increases, well, their signage issues where there's signs that are missing. And, uh, other signings that they've suggested. And I was pretty impressed. This, one of the senior engineers had some good ideas. And there's a team, several others who've had some good suggestions about ways that they could, uh, improve signage to alert people to mortal danger. Trying to go all the way across. And so I think they wound up with a structure this morning to deal with some of the safety issues. And then keep an eye on it. Again, we'll get a report from, but I sense that's where it's going. Can't guarantee at this point, but they had some hope they could improve the safety there by those types of measures, so. Good news, and they seem to appreciate that, uh, now that the folks are, you know, turning out, commenting, participating, and, uh. Had a chance to choose a little bit about some of the other things we'd like to do in terms of round nine intersections, car requests out there. Which is good, it knows, it's associated with that, so.
So who's in charge of the state's OT?
DOT, uh, for, for the most part, Terry Allen is gonna do some of the things there, work with them on signage, uh, some missing signs, yeah. So, uh, again, we've got a report on it, so I understand it. And they're, they're starting to work on some of the things already. Small changes, but maybe impact on safety, obviously, correction.
Sam, if you talk at all about fresh data and, you know.
Oh, yeah. It's fascinating that the, uh, the bulk of the crashes are from drivers between, I think it was, uh, seventeen and thirty-five years, eight, something like that. And there are two cities of bad data, so going across that intersection, stay away on Tuesday, so some strange injuries started to initiate a bump. But, uh, no fatalities of the data that they have, but a number of angle crashes which are, uh, high frequency as well, so. No, no overwhelming, confusing data, etc. Apparently, there's not very few.
Okay, so the next one is, this is the first time, um, I think that we, so we've got twenty-eight holes, it's zero twenty-three. And Sam and Andrew are sharing the E B sequel. And so Sam put it on here to discuss, and then we delegated Andrew to discuss it, so Andrew.
Sure, that'll be easy. Okay. So, and this one, um, just kind of provides some information, but it's on a number report, so it's not really for discussion. It's really just to give you a heads up about discussion, which we might have a couple months from now. So, uh, Sam and I sat down with, uh, Rob Anderson and, um, Belknap and Vanessa. Were there, and we talked about their, that round two, and talked about the, uh. Their, uh, their goals and what they're doing. And, uh, you know, one thing that is apparent for the discussion is that the. Um, moved out of Southboro and the EC corner position, which, uh, was a part-time position. Has been a big enough town as supposed to, for a position, has not been able to find someone who's like fit and, um. Rob, um, now, or there's, they don't feel there's, it's, uh, a good idea to be posted position again and try to look for another. Cycle, that makes sense, understanding, you know, the higher environment these days, post pandemic, etc. So. One of the things we talked about, who then, was the idea of putting out the consideration for the budget cycle, which is coming up this year. To, and particularly considering that, you know, one thing that John Wood often said when he was chairing the Old Regent was. Part-time position that she was, basically, so about creating a different position. A community economic development operator, which will be full-time. And, uh, in this sort of, another idea that Sam has before frequently is the idea of. Trying to centralize loan function within the town, all the pursuit of grants, keeping track of the grants that are available. So that really, kind of one person will be responsible for. Community group town, available opportunities to. Apply for rents, et cetera, et cetera. Um, so it's, there's obviously pros, cons, different perspectives. I bring it out because I know that, uh, you get a very, very serious thought to every time you create a new full-time position, that's what this will be. But from the, um, the idea of having the community that not develop or, to be, to be, or something with. Mr. Anderson has talked about before, um, based on his experience with other, you know, some valleys in Massachusetts. So, um, this is just a heads up that, um, I think that this fiscal year where you've got. Let's say crisis, uh, problem where they feel they have no administrative support, this is an opportunity to at least have a discussion about. Whether you create a new full-time mission that, uh, a return for the time, just. Rans. Maintain a good title, businesses, et cetera.
But, you know, it sounds, um, certainly something that is a little bit uncontrollable, but if that is the thing, it means that it stays, maybe for a whole year. And, um, you know, they still got, needs to adjust that, I don't think, a lot, and it makes sense to do that, because.
Well, we talked about that, how, how about a British, uh, maybe part-time position, and Rob Anderson had some ideas, people that he knows that's a business base. Might be able to find a part-time person, British, to that full-time place. Or a person.
You know, Lommy, Alita is in Japan.
There you go.
You know, she, the time's only a little bit off, but.
You're all right.
I have lots of questions about, we took an extra question.
That's what, one, the point we said was that this would be, and I, I know that there's a lot of questions, but. I think that if this cycle is the time to answer or ask these questions, we have a discussion.
No, I think that's fine. Um, I actually have a question, I think falls under. This discussion has started a goal. Um, and if you could finally be interested. So there's two businesses downtown that are for sale right now. Um, Southboro House, it's eighty-one, and the real estate office is getting kind of a little stressed, so I'm gonna leave one house off. Or, I'm just, all of the loans are for sale. So I would just, um. Maybe EC aware and then maybe, uh, maybe think of a path, maybe work with, uh, the, the real estate agent or, or who met her. And also maybe follow another step, further to another discussion, but with one of those old things, so it's, it's still eighteen hundred, it's a restorable. But even though Suffer House doesn't qualify as a restorable, because it was nineteen twenty-seven, it still, still has significant.
It's hard to judge, yeah.
Right, exactly. So I think these are just things that you're, you know, being a little bit on the run of the whole tournament, to bring that back. And just to start thinking about how we invest for what is gonna take us down, so.
Okay, um, the next one is Lisa, incident command system training.
All right, I'll make this one really quick. So Mark Taylor wants to jump here, I tend to incident command system training. That Mima sponsored at the Public Safety Building last week. It was a, a brief course that went over some of the common objectives. Uh, ways that an incident command system could be applied, describing major responsibilities of a executive senior officials related to an incident. Functional responsibilities and explain administrative logistical finance and reporting implications of logists and. It's a great training that, um, and what, as to what should take place with a major incident. And how would we best utilize the resources through FEMA and well, as well. It's great to see that some of our, uh, surrounding communities attended as well. So it'll be great to, you know, we can have those conversations. Um, so I just wanted to, you know, I don't know if you want to add anything to that?
No, I thought, I, I thought it was really just to get, you know, to get the, you know, to see the next, um. Or, it's also for, for pressure. And it was nice to have, um, I believe that I created a association once, sorry.
Yeah.
So it was nice to have, you know, to, to stay in the session, um, uh, actually, that's true.
That's it, I'm good.
So the next to five and six, we concluded that the messy choices was something exciting, but I just wanted to say this to you. Um, and last time we're done, when we got, so we're done with.
I have one, which I know that I did list, but I just want to know this because I think there's interest. Um, we're under a four A, full Y. What's that? Sure. So, uh, one of the things, um, that, uh, I think, uh, people are aware of is the national grid. It's coming out with their limited rates for electricity, but they're increased.
Yeah.
Um, um, the information that I have in the grid is that their new basic service residential rate is gonna be just one third of excess for the lot hour. Um, I do want to point out that towns, uh, do their, the aggregation program. Uh, our rate is just under eleven cents, um, per the lot hour. Um, residents, businesses can opt in, opt out if you like.
It's not too late.
It's not too late, you can opt in now, you can opt out, okay. You can opt out February, you can opt back in in, in March.
There are no rates since we're here to.
And this rate, um, we were secure, you know, we have this rate until December of twenty-four. Okay, at which time, maybe we're gonna have to. Okay, at which time, maybe we're going to have to be able to suddenly, when the aggregation program contracts, which is going to back to the tour, some of these changes, maybe we're on the other side of that, this gives installation, you know, for the community, there are kind of, that's definitely going to be able to sign up. Just want to put it out there, we're pushing it out on Twitter, because national grid is a sense of invasion.
Maybe you'll have some.
Go back and take a look. Yeah, it's, it's probably, I think, over seventy percent, maybe, sixty-seven percent, I think they've taken advantage, but I just wanted to publicly take an opportunity, just so people understand that there are options, try to help, British putting out information saying, here's what you can do with your building, here's some things to try to help assistance and everything in that, here's something that can help you.
Right, one suggestion is, that's a huge increase, so, there would be, aren't they, maybe a push through the seniors there, to get them to actually make an explicit outreach, their population, because that's something that, like that is, some seniors have not seen this, don't pay attention to it, maybe, and are maybe a little concerned about what the aggregation program is, does that somehow jeopardize their the rolling by, principal, et cetera, et cetera. So, some ways, you have to not only alert them, but have the capacity for follow-up with people, if you have questions, come to this person, the seniors and everything, explain, as I recall, when I signed up, I think there's like a thirty day delay or something, there, it takes a while for picture next, electric bill, I have to call it, I'm not sure, not too long, clearly people are going to do something. Now's the time to, to think that.
And I think, too, there are people that, you know, look, it's always been Boston, it's always been, it's always been, you know, these, this is where I get mad on the Christmas, so, it's my trust, it's difficult to make that change, but know that you go in and insulate yourself, you know, against some of the high increases, and then go back if you like to.
And reinforcing that, find out with the actual percentages, tell people, you know, two-thirds of town is on this, so you're not doing something that no one else is doing. That can save people a way along, right?
Absolutely.
I think it's important, the child, that was enough to use, right, so.
The trouble is, is the total price, it's, it's huge.
Yeah, so two hundred dollars, so I'm going to. Each month?
Yeah.
All right, so anything else, Mark, to cover this? All right, so we're on the seventh, okay, so you've got A through E, so I'm going to call that anytime again, cycle there, the whole of A.
Four, four.
E. To, to S F, that we told them, and C is seven hundred dollar donation, and D is approving, thirty-three, three, eight. E is approving donations, for the trails committee, can be, once, I don't know, that's. Okay, so we've got A D, ready, okay, so let's get B, C, and D, and, so, no motion to approve, consideration of items B, C, and D.
So.
On paper, so that's free now. Okay, Sam, you can help A.
I've got comments on nine, seven, nine, twenty.
That's all, right?
Nine, seven, line two, twenty-nine, right, as usual, as usual, Miss Feller. Home, or, instead of over. That's it for the end, nine, seven.
So, you should know that, that they went two hundred and twenty-eight lines, and how old was that state?
We, we need to say, we didn't know that.
And it's written there, it's, that's. Something on nine, fourteen, and nine, twenty, line twenty-two and thirty-one, Burnett wrote, Miss Feller. Line one of the seventh, was basically between motion two. And line two seventy, Chris Lawless. And that is, we, we get all the time.
That's a bit of a bet.
There are nine points of that. I think the line thirty-five, it says guy, it should be guy, G Y, right?
And thirty-five?
Yeah. Like a guy, Y, or G Y?
Yeah.
And the spelling of the last name on one set of the U A, did you mention that?
I did.
I think that's not the right spelling, Sam, it's, it's.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah. That's amazing, you got it. Okay, so I think we're all, except. Okay, so, kind of motion to approve, and it's from nine, seven, nine, fourteen, and nine, twenty, estimate.
So.
Second, on paper. Okay, so there's that, now let's talk about the, so, okay, so is. Okay, so, why don't you bring Kathy Keever, Vanessa. So, long story short, you know, how the public needs to trails, and it's just trying to do to their video. So, they were trying to basically increase the exposure of trails by asking people to sign, go to the website, sign up, a little guide, and if they do, and they're going to be at long for a gift certificate, same, to buy, well, we've got three, and so forth. So, when this first came to the town, it looked like a rap, it's not a rap, so, you know, I would, you know, I would. So, I just got my tax out on my account. This is, she wants to do this, it's my understanding, the parents' way, they want to have her, and then you completely want to come up, and they're going to see the website, and it's going to say, you are a website, and like this, based on whatever, then you're going to be following for instructions, right, so we, then, all right. I, I just think it's a bad precedent, so you could say fine for this one, but I think you shouldn't worry that, this kind of thing, what she done, like, friends who just support it, or your charities, and you're going to do this, no matter the state donation, they don't want to send, thank you letters, so they have to, and all, so. I just think this is a bad idea to, to urge our committees and departments to, to do. But again, I don't want to do anything to make Kathy Keever, even though we don't appreciate it, we just do it. But this is not necessarily a question to, 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 to. So, the question tonight, do we want to try to, so I know Mr. Harry has reached out to friends, you know, Brittany Park, and that's, so I asked that. So, they, they reached out, I'm not sure if anybody ever actually used, and I have a mark talk ten days to, for ten hours to ten, so it continues on everything. So, I'm not sure if I should, if friends are aware, but where should it be? Or not, because it's, it's pretty, so, so the question is, you know, there was a stage right over there, so if you, so you're basically fine tonight, just so we know that you said this is not a good way, maybe so the policies, the text, and that we've done with the parts to solicit donations, we want to print, so almost every department that might do this, I think, are, I, I, I think, most of them, right? So, I think this is a way, and on, would you do this in a better way that doesn't miss anything?
So, let me just ask you this, if, if you do it this way, are we in any violation of, again, I, I, I'm not making sure of, with, with five oh one C three, by the town accepting it, does that mean the town is actually giving these certificates away? And can the town do that?
Town clearly, you know, she's, the, the trails department, so the town clearly is setting up donations and handing back to her.
So, I guess my question is, can the town, can you set up donations, and then the town, then do you give orders?
Town is starting to set up donations, right, all the time, that's about, right, and you got rules. The people, this is probably pretty small, I need to read them, right, they will, they will say to that, it is, it is, but it's a third letter, I'm saying, whatever. So, I think it's probably the occasion, you know, here you are, and the time, and you need to, so I think it's okay, and this is something that is really practice, I need to be in control, because people don't quite understand, they, it's, I say something, it's, you have to get into, and even friends raise money, right? To support the department, they will want to support, and it might, it's, you know, the right, right, rather than have the, a committee on its own, try to solicit donations of this.
So, if the really town meeting, it's a funders, Jim, and I, I guess, we, you know, the answer to this, Mark, my understanding is always that, that's why the sentence is set up. So, being town committee can't actually fund this, is that being correct? Okay, so then I just start, I think, I'm, I'm not against, I can find a way to make this work, I just worry that, I guess, if the select board accepts it, if the select board gives it out as a fundraiser, is that still creating an issue potentially? Again, I'm just, I'm worried about the gall of what we can and what we can't do, I mean, there's reasons, runs are set up, so. I don't want to put it on the spot, I'm sorry. I just, again, I, I want to find a way, hopefully, to do this, so here, this day is coming up, and the.
So, I think you can maybe do this, you know, I know the friends, so I can follow this, and I can say, you know, you've got a free certificate, so we would like you guys to accept. And you're cool, and then the trails will do their thing at here today, and they will let you know who got selected. Gather them to access like the person that is going to move on to do this, I think it wants to.
I think that would be great.
And which terms of recreation.
Yeah, and then that's a, and they work. Yeah, and I think, I think she said, she said, you can find with the friends, and he works for a while, right? That would be great.
And that's the money, which is.
So, I'm going to.
Yeah, I think that's better.
Going to make a suggestion, if you can find this out sooner rather than later, because if we need to accept this for the board, what's that to do it by Monday? We need to know, we will, hopefully, in the, the, to accept, to tell me to accept this, so.
Anyway, so, so Kathy, this is her.
Yeah.
She, she's in?
And, well, before she, we're going to answer, notice in her email, says, discussed confirm process of Jay Tallor last week, so I'm going to consider that. She was referring to there, that's how I was talking about what we're talking about.
Okay, go.
Hi, so can you hear me okay? Okay, I can't hear you, just so you know, audience members, I don't know if anyone else has this issue, I can hear every other word, and the further away you sit from the mic, I can't hear you, and the faster you speak, forget it. So, whatever Andrew just said, I didn't hear that, so can you speak slowly and loudly, and I'll, I'll.
Can you hear me now? Can you hear me better?
Yes.
You can? Okay.
Well, it's ten or twelve, David, and that one.
Your email, the packet, says, discussed confirm process of Jay Tallor last week, what is that about?
Yes, so I, first, before we did any of this, I, I talked to Tim to make sure he thought this was an okay idea, and he did. So then, when I was meeting with Jay Talloman about the trails agreement with D C R, I asked him the process about, you know, this is what we want to do, we want to give away some gift certificates that have been donated to the people of town to boost our social media, promote local businesses, and reach a larger audience in general, so that we can get the word out on upcoming events and stuff. And he said he did not see a problem with this approach. So then I asked him, should we, how do we receive these donations? Because I understand from some conversations with the Mass A G's office, and some of this topic has come up in the past about soliciting businesses. The question was, if, if we do that, how does the town, how does the trails committee receive that? And so the appropriate measure to receive donations on our behalf is to go through the select board, as you guys have accepted donations for other organizations. So, so I asked, I was like, well, then we should probably go through the select board and have them accept these gift certificates, and he agreed. And he didn't have an issue with our approach here. So, that, that was the conversation I had with Mr. Talloman.
Kat, do you have an issue with our approach, or proposing?
I couldn't, I mean, I, I think you said, let's do it this time, but let's never do it again, but I didn't hear what, any details about what that meant, if it was something different than.
I'm sorry, we lost, we lost the microphone tonight, so that's why I.
Oh.
So, ten days is in the, so, we are proposing that, we, a lot of people know this is always, but we would prefer that the friends of the rec mission, he actually handle this, they actually, they discover donation, if they're, they're posting on the letters to families, basically, on the letter, out to the three, um, shoulders, and that they basically were going to do as far as deciding who's going to get first tickets. Um, and that they basically were ready to do as far as deciding who's going to get first. So it's, now this is the method, this is for ourselves. I'm still get your, I'm still getting this, to, 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 to. Rather, um, this be one through the friends instead of ones.
Okay, so then you would vote for the, for the, for the friends of recreation to receive the donations on behalf of trails and then we would work through them?
Yeah, we're not friends, friends has, friends, and they don't have to vote. I mean, they accept donations all the time, so they don't have to vote. They don't have to do what we do, they don't have to vote to accept money, or anything, very much. Um, so I, I think that we find this, um, we just need to talk to them tomorrow. Which I don't want to do.
Okay, so, but they don't decide who gets the gift certificates because that's a.
No, 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 you're in the program, uh, you can run the program. Um, let me give you an analogy, friends of Southwood Youth Commission raises money for that entity and they support the programs of the town. So the town runs the emergency fund and basically says, we recommend that you basically use emergency fund for this. We keep the emergency fund, but town, uh, the process is supposed to know, you're also one of the program. As far as who's going to be the certificate, but it will be the, uh, friends who actually hand out the certificates.
Okay, I mean, if that's how we have to do it, uh, you know, that's, that's fine, whatever it takes to, uh, and I appreciate you're trying to find a solution and helping us work through it. And it is not our intent to create more issues in town. Literally just a good idea of giving back to the community and supporting local businesses and trying to.
One of these easy, we like to easy, so you'll still have your, um, yeah.
Again, Kat, I think that you wind up doing exactly the same thing.
Yeah.
The only difference is the money goes to the friends and the actual award comes to the friends to determine how the process works, who gets to be worst.
Okay. The only, I mean, I'll have to work with the friends because I have the gift certificates in hand and so I don't know how the money goes through them exactly. But I'll figure that out with Tim and the friends. Thank you very much.
Oh, yeah, who's hands, it's the friends.
And I'll, I'll continue your comments, so, um, yeah. Okay?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So we don't vote.
Okay? All right, we've been waiting for the next slide.
Can you reach the final instance?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. Pass the hour.
I can share your name.
I want to share a board of.
That's what we need.
That's what we said.
I left that meeting with Greg believing that he thought that to put the exclusion on flag, we had to take it off on Main Street 30. And remember, the exclusion goes all the way from town line to town line. From Westboro to where we turn on framing up on the five-way intersection. So that's where it is right there, because I'm hoping. So that's what I thought he said at night, but that's not exactly what he said. And we know that because of all the questions that Andrew has asked and then I guess on the beyond that. So he has now talked to the DOT about that question specifically. He's gotten not a great report replied, but he didn't get a yes, you definitely should take it off. You want flag, it was not necessarily to take it off, you know, we'll look at it. With alternatives to that, et cetera. So you could apply for flag or some combination of flag, deerfoot, Parkerville, possibly Clifford, that O two before that he put in that report that she might want to. Because you know, you take it off flag, then you go to the other one, so possibly you can do all four. The night he was here, he didn't say Clifford. He did say though, that you might want to consider doing, he definitely said, put exclusion on flag, Andrew, he said that tonight. And then we asked him at Parkerville, so yeah, I came up to him, he didn't say Clifford, but I think we're in that report as far as with that. Since then, he has, with the phone call I made, after talking to DOT, has changed his mind a little bit about whether you should do deerfoot. He thinks that maybe we should just apply for the flag and see where it goes. Because if someone is going to take deerfoot from Route nine all the way to Main Street, they're going to avoid flag, right? They're going to go deerfoot, deerfoot, but it's simply for way to main. And therefore, they're not applying all that they think of it. So he is suggesting now that we not ask for deerfoot because DOT might look at that as an alternative to flag and might look at the request more favorably. He's still not sure what they're going to say. He said, you know, he's going to say his move. But he did say it's, he thinks it's worth a shot to specifically request exclusion on flag and see what comes back and not necessarily expect that they say you gotta take it off and want to take it off on Main Street.
I think the data showed, the traffic data that they had, it showed that there was, that flying actually could qualify.
Yeah, that's exactly right. That was his point. Sorry, I should have said that.
So I think that's.
Flag qualifies on 5%, right? There's two tests, 5% or more, right? Or trucks and the road itself just leaves itself the way it's designed. It's just too dangerous to put heavy trucks on. So those are your two tests, one subjective, one is objective.
I'd be inclined to ask for what we think we could get as opposed to loading it up with stuff that we're going to.
So ask for flag and not ask to take off.
I missed the flag.
Yeah, and not, not do it. Make it back and say, if you want it, you gotta do that. Why volunteer to do it if there's a chance that they're not going to make you unfavorable?
Well, I agree that there's a lengthy discussion with lots of detailed questions. But the main point, which I was surprised is that for a year or so. In fact, one of the reasons why we did the traffic study in first place was the assumption that in order to put on a direct exclusion on flag road, you would need to remove the truck exclusion on Route 30. And then this is played out in a way which is kind of was predictable that once that kind of we got the study and then had that discussion, there was a lot of concern about doing that. That raised this question, okay, do you really need to do that? And the answer was very surprising and it wasn't just conjecture. It was based on his discussion with MassDOT, right? So the worst that can happen, if this is approved, this seems to be, everyone seems to be happy. There would be a truck exclusion on flag road and the truck exclusion on Route 30 would not need to be approved. We'll move to that. So give it a shot and we'll see what happens. I still think coming back to one of the reasons why we did the traffic study was to do that. We still have all this good data that told us some very interesting things, particularly about Oak Hill Road and ideas for nighttime exclusions, so.
So I think we still go back to those, right? We still have it done, but this was the priority, this exclusion, so let's get this one out of the way first and then we do it. But interestingly, I hope the flag road residents aren't disappointed because if you look at the trucks that are actually on flag, they're mostly delivery trucks.
Yes.
And that's not going to get rid of that. They still have the right to go deliver the Amazons and FedExes, whatever. He said that during their test series, they only saw on the days four semi trucks, two going each way. That's all they saw. So it would take care of those, but not the other 48 that were on there for sure have a right to be delivered because they're destination trucks. So they're still going to have a lot of landscape trucks, a lot of delivery trucks, but the big semi trucks, it should take care of those, not even go there unless they've got a destination on flag road.
I think we still continue to think about moving Crystal Pond on an intersection, a little part of the east to take away some of the Kents U-turn traffic there that I think creates a little more pressure on flags or so.
So he asked about that one too. So Greg asked, you know, the same guy that met with you guys.
They're calling, yeah.
And he said, that's not impossible, but he did say we need to pay for it. And then he did talk about a program that if it's big enough, we might be able to hook into. But that DOT would not come up because that intersection is about only 10 years open. So they just wouldn't spend more money on it that soon. But the idea was to move it further east so that the trucks that are trying to get cans could turn into cans and not hold ship cans, which is what they do now. But he said you'd have to wind up Crystal Pond with us if the Crystal Pond training that you do, there's.
Totally clear.
That's, I mean, as we said, that's, so I don't know either, that's what he said in the email and that there's a lot of weapons right there, so it might be tricky. So anyways, that's kind of what I'm thinking too.
I think you take the first step and see what they say.
I agree with that.
If we get a yes, it should be.
Yep. So easy thing we've done tonight, yes, it's great, it's a great one, all right.
What do we need to do to?
I think we should make a motion to basically apply DOT to put a truck exclusion on flag road and then Mark the work with this to do the application.
Yeah, how long? How long does that typically take, MassDOT, to do those kind of things, to experience more?
So we still have not got the response back from DOT.
The 25.
I don't know if that answers your question, but it's.
Let's hope it's a different group that's doing that.
Well, maybe our friend from PHV and.
Well, he does clearly have connections into it. I mean, he called this guy, so he clearly does have connections that he may be able to help expedite this one.
So we'll, we'll see.
Okay, so the motion is to basically approve the application to DOT to put a truck exclusion for heavy vehicles on flag road?
So.
Okay. All in favor?
Mr. Farrington, if you're reporting, they were.
There you go. Hopefully you made it small and make sure you're on those quickly, before text really quickly. Okay, the next one. Okay, so this deserves a little, okay, so I got some really good news, guys. I'm sorry to do this to you, but they have filed, Paul Stellig has finalized his year-over-year residential value increase and it's much more than what you thought, it's 16%. Now, we backed it 12 and we did our termings, so I've got the graph cap spreadsheet here. So good news is the average house in Southwood has gone from $690,000 to $803,500, average house.
Is that, that's average or is that mean?
It's actually, well, average and mean, the same thing, it's not mean.
Oh, mean, mean, mean.
So this is mean, air, right? Truly add them all up by the number of houses, that's what it is. It's not a mean, it's a mean. Okay, so that's 16%, okay? So everybody's, everybody's telling us, I'll be happy if house prices go up, right? So you're going to sell it. But that means that unless we do something quickly, that means a five, almost 6% year-over-year tax increase to our residents. Or one above. It's a 6%, so we look at your tax bill for last year, the one that's about to come out in February 1st, your tax bill is going to be 6% or 6% more than it was for this year. All right. So I mean, we told down.
What is the amount, Kathy? If we, if we stayed with what town meeting approved, I mean, ballpark, we'll be looking at a million dollars, 500,000, so what is it, Mark? 1% is probably.
1% is 450,000, so we. So we told everybody it's about 4%, so this is 50% more, also simple difference as far as the increase goes.
That's 850,000.
Yeah, and we don't have a lot of ways to find it, you know? We don't have the ability to just go, okay, this is appropriate free cash town meeting, right? It's truly, so that leads us to now the little bit we can do, which is go back to the money stuff that's on the special town meeting board. So remember last meeting, the group here agreed that we were just going to throw to the tax, I believe, we're going to use ARCA for the, any articles, which was the 152 for trees, which was the money from the paid national system, was the $5,000 for clicker. So since then, the good news is we don't have to buy the paid, we got a grant that Mark and Vanessa worked with to get so we paid it down to system, he paid what was off the table, okay? So when we got left, we got the tree article to take all the trees down and we got the clicker, right? I knew this one, right? That's, that's it, right? So that's 152 plus 5, that's $7,000. So when they were called to the meeting, I said that, I was, I called Paul Stellig to ask him that. I said, since you have agreed to release more money from Oakley than what we had first anticipated in May and you're releasing even slightly amount, you need to pay recharge for it. Sounds immunity on my mind, he goes, how much do you need? He said, anyway, check. So Chelsea, who was in there last week or so, and stopped by and had said their conversation. He said, how does it sound? So he has said that he has an extra $100,000 in Oakley he can lease now in basically fund, you know, 100 of the 152 for that. So now we're left with 52 to fund and 5,000 for clicker. So I said to him today, well, then I'll go back to Southwood and say, guys, if you want to take the 57 and use ARCA money for it. And remember, last time, the comment was from someone that, well, we want to stick, we want to stick with what our committee recommends so far. Well, we are, we still have that bucket of, well, the tax, we've already used it four times already. It started at 500, it's down to 2. It's down to 297, yep. So we could throw the other 57 through that and not have any impact on the articles of special town meeting on this lovely 6%. So again, it's a tiny bit, it's not going to make a difference, but if you subscribe to theory, look at helps, it's a little bit, not lighter.
So. I think what's happening is when you read the minutes from the last meeting, sometimes it reminds me. So as we talked about at the last meeting, we decided not to use.
That's right.
But then essentially, I think when you're suggesting.
I was, I was, I support her, but no, I won't allow.
Okay, but based on this unfavorable development.
Yes, I think we should change our minds.
And the 100,000 coming from Yoder Lake, I would support taking that down.
So this will be, for example, for the tree backlog?
Yeah.
Okay, so then, do we know why it should be revoked from advisory? I guess where I'm going at is if we pay for with ARCA, then does then the article?
Article will be amended on account of what we do, just from 152 to 100 and then say paid for by release of Oakley reserves, that's what will happen, tell me. Right, and then the article that has the 5K in it and the 27K in it, the 27 is still there, right?
That's what the payment, we have an article.
Yeah, so just add the.
And we still are going to try to pursue community contact?
We did, we got it. And that's what's paying for the paid premises and the same is going to be demoed tomorrow.
And Mark, Karen.
And so the group is like demo, so, yeah, so that one got paid for with the, so they work a little best. We get what the process was, but Vanessa and Mark were very fast, done, done, and we got.
So the only, you follow the using topping off the tree expenditure with ARCA?
Yes.
The only financial impact or ask from this board is just the 100,000.
Yeah, but that's coming out of the assessment, so it's a net impact of 0 to, yeah. So this, so this is not going to get worse when doing that.
So in a roundabout way, we are conforming with the policy of non-fiscal articles.
We are, absolutely, that's exactly what we've done, yeah.
But you still, just to point out, you still have the $24,209 that is coming out of recent progress, which is the funding to collect with our organization, fire, and send those dollars to the church stuff. I guess, this, this makes sense to me. And just the reason why I have, the last meeting was really this, is this we have to get used to, just like this year, special town meetings, the annual timing, we go back to March, like normal times are presuming again, where we've kind of started to get into the habit of this, we're going to use some ARCA money here, but it's one or two more years, we're not going to be able to do this anymore.
Yep.
You have to get used to, if you want to pay something, if you want to, if you want to do something, you've got to find the word, pay for it.
It's a sound required in. Okay, so you're exactly right, but at least this, remember, if you listen to what's going on with house prices, right? Things are sort of slow, interest rates are going up, they are going to impact. But it still looks like the prices for 1123 are still going to be a lot more than 1122. So we may be going through this second time, maybe not as much.
The assessment process has lagged also, so I still feel that's past the time, past the peak, so.
So we may have another, so we still got our, our money we can use, but we're going to need to be just as diligent. And the next town meeting is not going to be May, it's going to be March. And so we're going to have some different measures we usually do, so there's going to be even more guests. We're going to ask Paul to guess even further as far as diaspora, he's nowhere near having that process done. So we've got another tough time to season to deal with.
Does this not leave us a 76% increase, this is a 5.5% or something?
No, no. The special town meeting stuff is not baked into this yet, so this does nothing, but not make it worse.
Doesn't make it worse. But the tax bills are going to go up with all these numbers here, right?
Tax bills, the bill you're going to get, you know, the first bill to get, the obvious person, there's a essence, right? So we don't know, we don't know what the taxes are yet. Also, they'll set it there, right? He sets the rate, it's all approved, and then the actual tax bill that sets everything comes out February 1st. And they basically say, these are taxes, this is three force of what you owe and what type of what you pay. So then you really know that your tax bill went up 6%.
But in November, in the tax hearing.
Yes, which one year will it go up, what year will it stay?
But with these recent numbers here, is it not certain that tax bills are right, so 4% at least?
Okay, so not calling, so it's not going to be 4, it's going to be 6. So it's not 4, we thought it was 4.
It's 4, yeah.
Yes, 4, because we thought that the average house price was going to go up 5%, it's gone up 16. So it's not 4, it's now close to 6, now I'm glad it's second, it's 5, 5.89.
Yeah.
But I still consider.
What could or shouldn't we do to mitigate some of that?
Yeah, so I'm not sure, there's a lot we can do because, yeah, I think that free cash is going to come in pretty good. This year we got to hear what that is, I think it's going to be good again. But you got to have a use of free cash, it's too, I mean, more than supposed. So I don't know of any way to really, I can't think of any way to mitigate this at this point. Now, well, okay, we got, yes, I can, yes, I can, I can go back. Well, we could use more than ARCA, we could, we could. But what we could do to, this takes, this is not our daily work, this is not our job, which I can tell, well, we're no late meat, we're fighting. If we can convince Carla and Paul and Brian to use more local revenue in their estimate, remember, that's where the free cash comes in. And I think it's going to be pretty good for fiscal year '23. So if they can put more in that, that, that's really all I'm thinking.
That's been holding up pretty well, as I recall.
It has, it has, it's very good, especially if you just close it out. So that's one thing, but I'm the one that says that no one ever, ever, ever supports me on this. So I just say it, and it raises a feeling, okay, so I never, so I'm kind of hanging out there long as far as that goes. So that's the only thing I can think of that we could do is do what we can to curse into maybe add or get more local revenue, right?
To be fair, finance team, well, there were, no, 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 there were increases that were made, you know, in the last budget process and all the receipts. Ah, no, you actually have to go back and look at the emails. You were very complimentary of the increases that were added into it, but.
I think we are bored to death.
Yeah, that's right, because we still have the arbitrarre rolled onto it for a while to see if something else comes up.
Yeah, I think, look, 6% is, it's very extreme, and I think.
Five and a half, yeah, right.
So, well, I'm 5.89, I think it's.
I don't know, I just think what we do have, even though there's recommendations for ARCA, I think they have put up to taxpayers, they probably need 6% tax bill and there's some things on here, but they might.
Do you?
No, I don't, that's why I'm, I'm kind of like, yeah, that's.
That's what, your, so your shoe spray rate this year, you know? It went up a lot, right? Shoe spray had a huge.
I know, but I know that, you know, again, we've been paying truck rates through water and sewer rates because we sent a tremendous amount of sewer to Westboro. So, and they had some, some EPA standards that they didn't have previously, so.
But I think you guys had a real bad impact on the residential.
Yes.
So, right, so more, I mean, this is hot in the press, right? So TBD, but at least tonight, we can, we should vote on removing the.
So is it, is it a total of $57,000 of ARCA? I just wanted to make sure, so that is what you're, that's what you're voting to do this year?
Yes.
Okay, so, okay, first step on the, on the stuff. So what would our deadline be if, before the tax bills come out? What is my drop dead point, if we can make any decision to do anything to all of that, what would that?
We got to do, we got maybe a couple of weeks before, this is October, and the, so he is going to quantify things really soon with the DOR. So we're going to move really fast as far as this comes to the US.
Thank you.
Our tax classification hearing is the 18th.
November, or October, or not usual?
No, we're doing, we're doing it usually on the second meeting of October.
Yeah, I hate to raise, tend on the topic.
I know you would. Carl will have his day.
Yeah, I understand, but that is a little bit, maybe it's something.
It's a whole other discussion, another day, Sam, I, it's for the event, absolutely.
Okay, so tonight, the little thing we can do tonight is go to use $57,000 of ARCA out of the general reduced in tax rate bucket to offset $52,000 of the cost of removing the dead trees and to pay for the clickers for town meeting.
So.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor? I think Chelsea would be fine for that first, so. Okay, all right, so we have. That's good.
One remaining visitor.
Mr. Schmey was hanging around. Oh, he is, I mean, although he won't be there.
Is he actually there?
Yeah, that's the question, huh? Okay, so any further public comment tonight from our public coming up?
You hung around this long, a trooper.
Grant Barrington, with the Vaglu. First, as a flag road resident, I want to thank you for the action on that tonight, I put the state through it. I did have a quick question on that. What was the, I believe that in order to submit a traffic exclusion, you have to submit an alternate route. What was the alternate route?
He's saying, no, they may come back and say, you better have an office to do this, but you don't have to submit one, which is my understanding. Now, this is not my, don't make sure he's known, anybody else's, but I asked that, I did it long back and forth with Greg, and he said, no, he said, that may be the reason they say no, is because you don't have a good office, okay? But as your mom pointed out, that night that we talked to Greg, you know, you've got 85 north and south, you've got 9 east and west, 9 east and west, you've got 95. So if a truck needs to get to downtown, if you go 85 and get on and, you know, come in, that would do so. We don't, my understanding, we don't have to give them, okay? But they may come back and say, we got a 5, so we just have to let's see what their response is, which goes in.
Interesting, thanks. And then I did have another comment related to the deal that you announced with the St. Mark's earlier, as a member of the St. Mark's street park group, but speaking in my private capacity. I think that's great news. Hopefully, we can move forward and get the, you know, something other than a pit there, so to speak. But one thing I just would caution, I think the, the reason I think that town meeting, previous town meeting was so acrimonious and contentious over this issue was, I feel like a lot of people felt that the then select or active first did the work and then retroactively went back and was asking for town meeting permission. And so I'm happy with the, a deal has been reached, but I feel like if you, if you move forward with work before town meeting actually approves it, then it could lead to some of the same issues in which, you know, people are angry that more money has been spent on the parcel that isn't theirs, almost kind of trying to force them into, into a retroactive vote. So I would just be a little wary of that.
Well, well stated, and we hear you, but the downside of waiting until the last month occurs, which will be next March, right? Is that then we lose the, if we don't do anything, this is, it stays like that, they're, right? And then the contractor is going to terminate that contract and we've got to start rolling, he knows completely what, and we have to do this. So there's a downside, you know, there's what you said, but there's also downsides of working to it and not continuing to do it once we are comfortable, we're free of the archaeological, the issue.
It is true. I think, yeah, a two-thirds vote, you know, I'm not sure what the exact vote was previously, but it was almost unanimous, I think it's fair to say, so that's another, you know, you have to convince two-thirds of the, if, if it is the same Paul, right? You have to convince two-thirds of the people that that was the reason why you had to act, so sometimes you can find.
I'm going to let it be nice, too, so.
I'm independent, I'm. Okay, so, thanks a lot.
Thank you for hanging around. Okay, so.
Come on up. Wow, Mr. Haggerty. This is a pleasure.
Thank you.
Today, before team member press trial, I was listening to Farrington, I, I thought of some of the comments that I heard earlier tonight. And I was very thankful when I was at El Boplin, hiding in the back of the stage. I didn't have to be in the front row of the select room, that was not an uncomfortable place for the week. But I thought about something that, given the worry, they had a comment earlier about hearings and process, and I just throw just a consideration out to you. You don't necessarily have to wait till the spring. You also have an opportunity to get another special town meeting. Cost is only in the range, this is the back of the envelope stuff, somewhere between $3,000 and $4,000, depending on the code. I know that's, you know, that's a good hunk of money, but it's something to consider, just throw that up to us, what?
Well, they're appropriate free cash, too. So there might be better reasons to.
So just a thought, okay?
How long would it take, Jim? I mean, I know the question was, I was getting, and it got me thinking about this.
It's within 45 days when you vote.
No, that 45 applies to a, yeah. So you could, at your next meeting, open up a warrant and you can close it whenever you want, and then you're good to go, then. Hold it within, post within 14 days, you're good to go. So just, just you have another tool if you choose to use, that's all.
Thank you.
All right, have a good night. And I have seen towns that have multiple series of stretches. So it hasn't been a, it hasn't been a practice here, but I have seen other towns.
Okay, so before we enter the second session, we need to.
We need this.
I'm taking mine down. Are you going to lock the, the national, actual. So, thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Yeah, so, yeah, I'm sure. Okay, all right, so I am now going to make a motion to adjourn the executive session where we be entering into second session for MGL Chapter 38, Section 21, and not returning to open session to review and approve executive session minutes from August 30th, set to the 14th, set to the 20th, leaving exception seven, and then two, we're going to discuss the continuing contract negotiations using section two, as the chair has determined that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the town's position.
Second motion.
Okay, so roll call. Okay, roll call vote for the second session. Andrew.
Aye.
Sam.
Aye.
Lisa, act, cop thigh, so 40 roll call.